I call the committees to order tonight. Our chairman, Chairman Dillon, has asked for a moment of personal privilege.
Thank you, Council Campbell. Whereas this is National Law Enforcement Week, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Chief Ruppo and the entire Woburn Police Department for their good works that they keep our community safe and look out after us. It is a job well done by them, and I know we all appreciate it. I would also like to thank Chief Marullo for all his years in Woburn PD and his chief as well, thank you very much, and Mayor Concanon for his many years in the state police. And let us not forget two that made the ultimate sacrifice, Jack McGuire and Officer Gibbons as well. And I do want to mention Officer DiNapoli. He was injured in a shootout and survived, but still has lifelong injuries. Thank him for his service. Thank you for the moment of personal privilege.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I call the committee on personnel to order. On the committee is Counselor Demers, Counselor Toro, and myself, Counselor Campbell as chair. We have three different issues on our roster, excuse me, tonight. Can I first have a reading?
I'll make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the previous meeting's minutes and approve.
Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it. First on the agenda, we have the appointment of Edmund F. McGrath to the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commissioners. We have Mayor Concanon, who would like to speak briefly.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the three candidates. Thank you.
So I am pleased to present to you my nomination. Hopefully, you will agree that the selection of Edmund F. McGrath to the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commissioners is an outstanding pick. I've known Edmund for a long, long time. Many of you know him, lifelong Woburnite, longtime Woburn educator, actually has done a stint at the Cemetery Commissioners Board and did an outstanding job. He expressed an interest in returning, and since we have a vacancy, I couldn't think of a finer pick, so I present Edmund McGrath to you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Please take a few moments to tell us about yourself and your experience. That would be helpful to us as we assess your appointment to the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commission.
Well, as the mayor said, I'm a lifelong resident of Woburn. I taught at Woburn High for 38 years, I suppose, and I've been subbing the last 13. And I worked over at the cemetery for 12 summers and then part-time while I was in college. I'd take the kids from school over there for a walk-up. They needed to cool off and have a smoke. Give them a little history, some of the stuff that I learned from the older guys that I worked with, veterans, and I think it's important for the kids to know these things. So I'd be wanted to serve again.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments?
I'll go. I'll say, I've known Edmund now for at least seven or eight years through the Lions.
That's fair.
Great pick, as Mayor Concanon said. Couldn't have a finer man join the Cemetery Commission, so you got my approval for sure.
Is there anybody that is not on the council? Okay, on the personal committee.
I'm going to suspend the rules to allow other members to speak. Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it. Counselor Papalotto.
Yeah, I just want to say I've known Mr. McGrath for quite a long period of time. I'm surprised you didn't mention that you were the longest-standing member of the Woburn Men's Softball League, part of your qualifications. But he's a great guy, he'll do a great job, and another great choice. Thank you.
Chairman Dillon.
Yes. Ed's a great man of character, a great teacher. He really did a lot in Woburn High. He worked hard with each and every student, and he may not want to admit it, but he was one of my teachers.
All the time.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to return to the regular order of business. Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it.
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Edmund F. McGrath to the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commissioners is sent out. Art to pass. Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have the reappointment of Meg and Meany to the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As discussed, the reappointments don't often come in for the interview or the meeting, but she is, Meg is available if there are any questions. But I am pleased and proud to present Meg and Meany for reappointment to the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library. I've known Meg for a while now. She's been on the board for a little bit. She's got a great relationship with the other board members. I spoke with the director of the library. She wholeheartedly endorsed this reappointment. I just think Meg has been doing a great job, and we should continue to let her remain on the board and offer her contributions. So I really appreciate your support.
I'll make a motion to the reappointment of Meg and Meany to the Board of Trustees for the Woburn Public Library. Get sent out. Art to pass. Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it. The last on the agenda, we have the reappointment of John Sawyer to the Woburn Board of Cemetery Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John is here tonight. John, longtime member and chairman, he does an outstanding job there. I'm sure everyone's familiar with his work at the cemetery. He takes great pride in how the cemetery is maintained and runs a great ship over there. I'm very happy to be with him.
John, welcome. I'm glad you're here. We obviously know what you've been doing, but give us an update on what's happening at the cemetery.
Well, I'd like to, first of all, put my support for Edmund McGrath. I'm very happy to have him working with me. We have a good crew, staff on the commission. We've got a lot of changes going on. We've got some landscaping contracts. We've got a lot going on. It's a very busy place. You wouldn't think a cemetery would be such a busy place, but it really is. I thoroughly enjoy doing the work. I take very much, take pride, take ownership of it, and we try to put that forth to our staff. So I think we're consistently trying to upgrade the level of care and the level of the cemetery in general.
Any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair. John is a neighbor of mine, great neighbor at that. And Mayor Concanon, we've had a discussion on the landscaping over at the cemetery. I personally contest on how good John's lawn looks. We might want to consider having him do some of the work. But...
Well, I do have a discerning eye, a little bit of a discerning eye.
Okay, anyone else?
I'll make a motion to the reappointment of John Sawyer to the Board of Cemetery Commissioners be sent out. Art to pass.
All in favor. The ayes have it. All right, thank you so much, John. Thank you for all your work. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor. The ayes have it.
Anyone hear from New England Orient Theory? Anyone from New England Orient Theory?
Thank you, Ron.
Why don't we do that, then, Bob? Okay.
All right, my name is Chuck Viola. I'm the chairman of the finance committee. We're meeting as a finance committee as a whole tonight. So with that being said, our first thing on the agenda is the reading of minutes from March 25, 2024. Could I get a motion?
Make a motion that the reading of the previous meeting's minutes be dispensed with and approved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First thing, first item on the agenda is the order for the sum of $255,000 to be transferred from the mayor's salary adjustment account to the Woburn Memorial High School teacher's salaries account. Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I have the city auditor, Jolly Darty, here with me tonight, too, and actually, the school committee chair, Mr. Lipsett, is here as well. This is a transfer to account for the recently settled custodian contract at the schools. There are sufficient funds, and I would ask that you please approve this. Any questions? Again, we have the auditor and the school committee chair as well.
Anybody have any questions? Comments?
Make a motion that the order that the sum of $255,000 be transferred from the mayor's salary adjustment account to the Woburn Memorial High School teacher's salaries account.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number three, order that the sum of $2,053,000 to be transferred from fire BLS ambulance account to fire regular salary account, fire overtime account, apparatus maintenance account, fire holiday account, and fire sick leave buyback account. Mr. Mayor.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Also, as I said, the auditor's here, and we have the fire chief here to explain. This is a standard type of request we do every year, maybe a little bit different in specifics this year, but generally speaking, it's the one you would expect to see at the end of the year, the settling up of accounts. Any particular questions about any of these sub-accounts? The chief is here, and the auditor is here as well.
Anybody have any comments?
I make questions. Counselor Papalotto. It's my first pass through this, so I have a lot of questions about a lot of different things. But is it normal for that type of dollars to be reallocated across, and why aren't they budgeted in the right GL or whatever they're called in this world?
I asked the very same question my first time around, and I asked the chief to answer it. It was a different chief, but I'll ask this chief to talk about the receipt versus...
If you want to talk about regular salary first, there's an offset, right, Mr. Auditor?
Yeah, currently in the budget, you'll see on the salary page, we have a direct offset, so that's an expected shot. Now, any of the other origins which are being addressed here are also using the BLS.
Yeah, so they're all coming from BLS funds. Yeah. The offset's for regular salary. The overtime is a little higher than normal. We have staffing issues. We have five members at the fire cabbie now to help curb that issue. And we've had, last year was extremely busy with injured on duty. We had seven people injured on duty that cost overtime. Because that's what jumped out at me, is we're allocating more for overtime than we are for salaries. Yep. So that's because you have a shortage there that you're trying to cover for. We do, and it's contractual, you know, the amount of people that work each day. It's, I don't just decide, it's contractual. Yep. Yep, thank you.
All right, and then just for clarification purposes, I spoke with Counselor Mercer Bruin, and she's in favor of this allocation of funds. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that the order that the sum of $2,053,000 be transferred from fire BLS to various fire department accounts. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the order that the committee on finance committee discuss the school budget. With us in the audience is school committee chair Andrew Lipsett, superintendent of schools Dr. Matt Crowley, assistant superintendent Young, and superintendent Ryan. Before we begin, just for clarification purposes, for the public, anybody watching at home, we have not been, we have not received the actual budget yet. What we have is just a draft budget at this point. And for those of you in the audience, we're not opening the conversation up to the public, just those that I named. All right? Does anybody on the council have any comments first before we begin?
Do you want to...
Yeah, if you want.
So I'll make a motion to make the two documents, the Woburn Teachers Association, part of permanent records.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Chair, I'd like to go first if I can. Counselor Toro. Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Crowley, his staff, and also...
Yes, please. Welcome.
You can take the head of this table. So I want to thank Dr. Crowley, his staff, and, you know, the chair for taking the time to develop the budget. I think we all know that this was not an easy task. It's a difficult one, to say the least, and we all appreciate that. With that being said, I think it's imperative to acknowledge that the budget discussion this year specifically associated with the school department is like no other that we've experienced. I don't think that's any, I think everyone understands that. The most recent discussion of a 14.34% budget increase request passed by the school committee during their meeting last night is a historic one. This doesn't mean that I disagree with the budget, but I think we all understand that it is, it's a tough one to swallow, right? It is one that requires some detailed discussion, which is part of the reason why we're here today, and also part of the reason why there's going to be some difficult discussions to be made to ensure what is passed is a budget that is in the best interest of not only our schoolchildren, our teachers in our schools, but also the residents of Woburn, who would actually share the burden of this potential budget increase. I think at this point in time, it's widely known that it's not if taxes are going to be raised, right, with the increment, with the outstanding or the budget that we have going on, the increase, but how much? And that's what we're really here. That's our job, to discuss that and try to figure that out. Our job as city councilors are to make the best decisions for all those families in Woburn to include the roughly 20% of senior citizens that live in our community, the low-income families, and the roughly 29% of households that have children, which is myself included. I'd like to address two misconceptions that I heard pertaining to the budget and the role of the city council. First, regardless of the will of the school committee, our school department will, in fact, receive an increase in funding from last year. I heard at the school committee meeting yesterday that any reductions in their budget would be a decrease. That's just deceitful. It is an increase. It's not a decrease. It's a tough pill to swallow if that is the case, but we aren't talking about cutting. We are still increasing at a historic level. Second, any decision made by the council, and I'm speaking solely for myself, we have not had conversations about this budget yet, if there are any decisions made by this council in terms of reduction of the proposed budget when it does come to us, all we simply do is provide a number in which we need to reduce by, which we think is best for the community. There was a discussion and a direct, a direct statement made at the school committee meeting yesterday pertaining to the school, the city council, and potentially the mayor's office, that any reduction in the budget would have, would result in a layoff of teachers, and it would be the fault of the city council, which, again, is not true. Like I mentioned, all we do is we provide a number, and what the school department or the school committee does with that number is their choice, what they decide to cut. So I wanted to make that known, that that's not true. What I would like to see, and what I didn't see in yesterday's meeting, was a more collaborative approach as opposed to a divisive, you versus us type of mentality. You know, our goal as elected official city council, school committee, mayor's office, to work together collaboratively to find a budget that fits the best for all of Woburn. I'd be the first one to support the schools. I have two children in our schools. My wife's a teacher. My whole family, my whole wife's family's are teachers, right? But we all have a duty to include the school committee, to provide the best budget for the city as a whole, not just the schools. We need to do what's best for Woburn. I advise or I recommend to the school committee that if there are reductions at that point, at the time that we end up deliberating on the budget, that we really take a look at the budget and try to focus any of those cuts on non-student-facing positions and try to minimize the impact on our students. You know, we are all on the same page here and all understand that this is a large increase. And I think everyone, I speak for everybody on this council, that we want the best for our students. You know, but we are facing a very large increase. And although I can, I can take on the extra burden of the taxes that would be raised, not every family in Woburn can. So we have to take that into consideration as well. Again, I have not made my decision up in terms of where I stand on the budget. That's part of the reason why we are here today. I have a list of about 28 questions that I'm going to ask. So I would just ask from this point forward that we work to be more collaborative, the school committee and the city council, and stop with the untrue comments that I personally heard and a few other counselors did in the school committee meeting yesterday. We need to work together and educate the public and not work against each other. Thank you, Chair.
Anybody else?
Counselor...
I'll read all comments, but I want it a little more personal. I was so offended last night at the fact that they said that the city council runs on the back of the school department and then doesn't support them with the tank of money. I've spent my entire life, not just my adult life, from when I was 21 years old as a police officer, supporting the Woburn Public Schools. To this very day, I read in those schools, I live in the schools, and because I need to make a business decision in the best interest of the community, doesn't mean that I don't support these schools. And for somebody to make a comment, a public-facing comment in a public meeting, the city council runs on the school department, rah rah rah, and then walks away as soon as they get elected, unnecessary, uncalled for, and I wear it on my sleeve, and everybody sits in this room knows it. This city is my life. I served 38 years as a police officer. I wasn't done, so I got elected to the city council, but the school committee, many of which I championed to get elected, say that in a public meeting. I find it personally offensive, professionally offensive, and I'm not going to tolerate it. That being said, I'll move on. But the years of goodwill were burnt in that meeting last night. And this is the calm down version. I already spoke to Andrew this morning. I'm not happy. These are people that I, that...
Anybody else? Counselor Demers.
I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues here on the city council. You know, first, I'd just like to say, as a former member of the school committee, I've sat in that room where there's been discussions that have gotten pretty fiery, but I don't think I've ever seen a moment where a member of the school committee, or multiple members of the school committee, basically passed the buck to the city council to make tough decisions. We sat down with the mayor. We got a number, and we worked towards it. If we had a, you know, an idealistic number in our own minds of what we thought was the best for the public schools, we moved forward with it. We let the public know this is where we need to be. Then we had discussions with the mayor about where the mayor needed us to be, and then we made those tough decisions. We didn't shoot budgets off to the city council nearly, well, basically, it came off as if it's our problem now. You make the cuts if you find that to be the situation. And, you know, the school committee needs to be the person who writes the school department budget. I get that. But we also have to live in the financial constraints that looks at every department's budget in the city of Woburn, not just the schools. I've been a supporter of the schools forever. You know, I'm a person who doesn't have children who served on the school committee. That's my commitment to the city of Woburn, because I wanted to see our schools get better for when the time comes that I do have a family, that our school, that our schools are cathedrals of learning for our students, and they create a future residents of Woburn, that I'll end up paying the taxes that fund the future enhancements to our school district. Okay? But I do echo the sentiment of my colleagues that, you know, I was deeply disappointed in the rhetoric that was very divisive, when we're all trying to work here together to build a community that we can all be proud of. And, you know, it kind of, I think it puts a black eye on this budget process, because, you know, a lot of us were going to be positive about this. There was no rhetoric coming from the city council or any other members of the city council relative to what we were going to do, nothing offensive towards any members. So it was surprising. It was very surprising on my side. And, you know, there's been, I went for a walk today to calm down before tonight's meeting, because it really, it really got me fired up and deeply disappointing to this point. The other thing, too, is, you know, if, if members of the school committee were going to have, you know, had very firm issues about the way we were going to be moving in this budget process, I'm readily available to discuss. It wasn't until last Friday that I heard from Chairman Lipsett about the budget process that I heard from anybody on the, on the school committee. So it was, it was surprising, because I think there was no antagonism from the city council or the city government that could have led to some of those comments. So I'm, it just, I'm left curious as to why we, that approach was taken. So I look forward to hearing more, look forward to working collaboratively. I'm going to, I'm going to try and put this past us after this evening so that we can roll up our sleeves and come up with a budget that we can all be proud of, and that does not wallop the taxpayers in general. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that we move the district forward without penalizing everybody across town in a manner that, you know, makes Woburn even farther out of reach of affordability, or it impacts the seniors that are here on fixed incomes. I mean, God, the single person, I go out every time I'm at the grocery store, it's $250, $300. I can't imagine what it's like for a family of four right now to deal with those concerns. So it's something that, we're not taking this lightly, but, you know, we're just concerned with the rhetoric that came out of that meeting last night. So I'll, I'll, I'll yield back my time, Mr. Chairman, but I'm hoping that we can come around and work together on this.
President Dillon.
Yeah, no, I was at the meeting as well, and to say I was disappointed is an understatement, particularly where, and the public probably doesn't notice, but for the last nine or 10 weeks, every Wednesday at 3:00, Mayor Concanon's office, Andrew, Dr. Crowley, administration, and some members of the school committee would sit and would really work at it. And it really seemed not always we were getting where we wanted to be, but at least we were having good conversation, and we, both sides knew where we were coming from. And that's how I want to head into this budget process, with that type of cooperation that the mayor led us to that, that was not seen previously. I just thought it was going to work out differently. So I was disappointed as well, but I think as a, for the betterment of this community, for all of us, we're just going to have to put it behind us, work together, and get this done. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Can I just commend James Austin in his statement? You can't have community without unity. I was very happy with that last night, though.
Counselor Papalotto.
Yeah, so, well, Counselor Toro said, I'm not going to repeat it, but I agree with everything that he said. A lot of hot feelings came out of the meeting. I wasn't there, I heard what happened in the meeting. It is what it is. So, but it's an extraordinary number that's in this budget, right? It far surpasses anything that's ever been approved before, to my knowledge. But we have to look at this thing as a whole, between the city side and the school side, to figure out what's the impact of the taxes. Because at the end of the day, that's what concerns all of us. And I know that we want to have the greatest schools in the world. I have more teachers in my family than anyone in this room. I guarantee you that. So I support the teachers, and I want what's best for the kids. But we have to consider the taxes and what the impact of that's going to be, because I don't see the city side budget coming down to make up for any of this. It's just not going to happen. So until we see some more, what's the effect of the taxes going to be? I'm in Ward 2, and this happens across the city. There's lots and lots and lots of people on fixed incomes. You mentioned the percentages there. I learned something from listening to you. But there's a lot of people that can't afford that extra $5,000, $6,000, whatever it's going to be, and we want to have the best schools we can have within the budget that we can stomach. It's not just the best schools, because we can't afford to do that. So, and the other piece of this is, I know we tend to go to the easy fix, not, I'm not saying in the school department, just in general, and start using things like free cap to take care of things, start using COVID funds to take care of things. We can't do that, because always the only is kicking the can down the road, and we're going to have the same problem. I look at you guys as experts. You guys, I read through every line of this thing, and I can't tell you that I can understand every line on this thing, but there's a lot of information there. And whoever put this together, they, they get it, right? You guys do this. You live in this. And I would ask you to go back and look, because I've managed budgets for 40 years, and if you can't find some fat in that budget, you're not looking right. There's things in there that need to come out. I'm not suggesting they have to be teacher-facing. They could be something somewhere else. There's money in here that needs to come out of this thing, because I will not support anything at this level of spending. Thank you.
Counselor Demerber.
I'm up in Ward 6, and we've been looking for a new school up there for 30 years. When you have budgets like this, that, that makes that dream, just that, a dream. It'll never come to fruition, because we are looking at an enormous budget that is going to take and be shelved in burden by our taxpayers, our residents. And I don't feel it's, it's necessary. This is... This is, this is quite a budget increase of 14.34%. And again, we're looking at, I'm also on the building subcommittee for the schools. I took a tour a few weeks ago of the schools. We all did. There are some serious problems in those buildings, some of which need to be torn down, some of which need to be sold to offset costs for new. I don't know how we're going to take, in every year, keep supporting extremely large budgets that come through the public schools, but we also have to maintain these buildings, and at some point, we have to build new ones. Where does that money come from? If we raise our residents' taxes $400, $500 in one whack, how do we take and ask them again, "We're going to raise your taxes another $200 for the next 10 years to support a new school"? They're going to come at us with pitchforks and torches. This isn't what we got elected for. This is something that occurs every year, and I made the statement last year. When it comes to this budget next year, let's start working on this tomorrow. It's on video. And here we are, a year later, facing the same problem and at a 14.34 increase. And again, this problem will come back again, next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. It's unsustainable, and I don't know where we're going to get the money to support these types of budgets and the things we desperately need, including just bare-boned basic maintenance on these buildings. And if that's where you're going to shave, good idea, because then you're going to have to take and try to build schools that right now are $1,000 a square foot to build as of today. Tomorrow, it's going to be $1,100, and probably by the end of the year, it'll be $1,500 a square foot. How do we take and sustain this? And for the people that are out there that say, "Well, we'll just raise the taxes on the residents because we have some of the lowest taxes in the state", well, guess what? You tell the other 41,000 people in this city you're going to do that. That is not the solution. I don't know what the solutions are. I know we're trying to increase our commercial base to offset these costs. As you know, in a recession, inflation's through the roof. It's the highest it's ever been. Companies aren't building, so I don't know where these cash registers are coming for to support stuff like this. And again, up in Ward 6, I'm never going to get that health vest to school rebuilt. Never, not with budgets like this. And for whatever reasons, no one's taking and putting that as part of a piece of this seriously juggernaut of a puzzle. It's massive, and I don't know what the answers are. But we're going to have to all come down. We're going to have to sit at the table, and we're going to have to shop on the pencil because this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Counsel Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I want to thank Chairman Lipsit for speaking with me the other day. We had a great conversation about the budget, and we talked about several things. What I had said to him was that the former administration was very tight on financial issues, to the point where it has made many departments needing employees, needing services, needing help. So I am thankful that we have Mayor Concanon, that hopefully we'll be able to address some of these issues across the board, whether it's for DPW, the fire, the police, Parks Department. They need help, and we've needed help for years. This particular budget is very strong, but I will have to say, as much as it's extremely high, that also with our, the former administration, was constantly cutting pennies, it seems sometimes. And I know that we have to do that, but it also really made it difficult for the schools to do what I feel they need to do. The pandemic changed everything, I feel. We have many children now because of the pandemic, because of having to wear masks, because of the fear and anxiety that they faced. They are now having issues. They are having mental issues. They, and some are behind on the reading and the writing. And as the director of religious ed at St. Charles, I'm seeing this in the students just in our classes. And I have, I have a little boy that speaks at home but will not speak when he's outside of the house. Very intelligent, second grader, but the fear, and he was, he was okay before that. So that fear came in, whatever it is. I believe there are many children that are going to need help, continued help because of that. We did not foresee the pandemic. Thankfully, Woburn came out very good on the other side of the pandemic financially. I think it was only like $4 million or something that we lost, and that's because we have so many businesses. So with the burden of the taxes, we every year, and Charlie, you could give me the amount, but every year we have free cash. And I have talked about this since I've been on the council, and I've been on the council for nine years. Sometimes it's upward of $25 million. Am I incorrect on the free cash?
It's accumulated. It rolls forward year to year. Currently, it was approved at June 30th of last year at $42 million.
$42 million, okay. So the free cash comes from taxes, unless I'm wrong. It comes from the tax amount that we are taxing our constituents. So obviously, I'm feeling like we might not have to raise taxes because maybe for just this one year, we can dip into that fund in some way to offset this amount that we're seeing here. I said to Andrew, since I'm a conservative, that's the crazy thing. Since I've been on the council, when it comes to the budgets, we've never had a budget that we could cut anything because everything was, it definitely was not penny-wise, pound foolish, that's for sure. So I, I am hoping that, and I said this to Andrew as well. I am not sure if the 14.3, whatever percentage it is, is the exact percentage of what we need to be at. But what I said to him was, if we go and come close to that amount, will we then be at a point that we are kind of even? Where maybe we would only the next year have the regular 3.4% or whatever it is. Bite the bullet now to take care of the issues that is needed in the school. I don't want to go with that much money. I don't, I don't want to approve 14.3%, but I also have seen the pandemic. I have seen, in my own scene, like I said, with the kids that I teach. And in the past administration, just strapping down so tightly that I believe has gotten us to this spot. It definitely has helped. And I am just questioning whether we, this one year, we do it. We have always supported the schools. I am disappointed to hear what took place last night because we have never not supported them during the pandemic. When you needed money, we were there. We said yes. You know, when you needed Chromebooks, go ahead. Yes, we found the money to do it. So I'm very disappointed in that. But I also think we have to look at this as, is this a one-time thing? Is this something that we can do? And then next year, it will just be the cost of living increase? Just a thought. So that's all I need to say. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the administration superintendent Andrew coming tonight. Just last night, the meeting itself, to have the city council, the mayor, get attacked pretty much by one specific individual, saying that we ran on the backs of the children, and we don't support the kids unless it's an election year, pretty much. That's untrue. I have family that have worked for school departments for over 70 years combined. They're members of Mass Teachers Association. I mean, I can go on and on. My family supports teachers, even the fact that I ran for school committee before, that I believe that much in our school system. And then to have those comments made towards us saying that, pretty much that we're going to be hurting the teachers and the kids if there's cuts to be made. The burden from this astronomical budget is going to be put on all taxpayers. So elderly are going to have to wonder, are they going to be able to eat dinner or take their medication? You have people that are living on fixed incomes, whether or not they live in paycheck to paycheck. They're going to need to decide that. But that's pretty much what I have to say for now. I have questions, but I'll open it up to...
Okay, one more, Chuck?
Yep.
Big picture, you guys are doing a great job, and I thank you for that. What you do for the kids, what I see happen, you're doing a great job. And I lived in the schools for 15 years as a school resource or dare officer in the precursor before I went back on the street. And you guys are doing a great job up there. Please don't take any of the money fight to the quality of product fight. And I mean, I believe in what you're doing. I believe in you people. I believe in the teachers, most importantly. And I just want to put that out there. The big picture, you guys are doing a great job. And I'm proud. I'm proud to be part of your school system. And that's the key element. I still believe in part of your school system, and I don't want that to be lost on anybody.
I had one other question, and this is just, back when the migrants started coming into Woburn, I thought there was some type of funding that was coming from the state. And I didn't see that unless, I could easily have missed it in here, but I didn't see any allocation for that. So did we not get it? Are we not applying? Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can talk about that. Yeah, we get $104 per day per, that students are enrolled. And so it's dispersed three times. We've gotten one dispersment, I believe, so far, for about $430,000. And we should get another one. I don't know if it arrived. I'm looking at Charlie. And soon, and then we'll get another one in July.
So is that baked into this?
So we're using that money, so on one of the pages, it talks about newly arrived.
Yeah.
We use money to pay for teachers this year and support staff this year. The five, I don't, $535,000.
Yeah, so it is included in here. Is that what you're saying?
Part of it's included in there, and part of, part of it's we're using this year.
Okay, and then the money that is owed us, will that be baked into this as well? Did you say they will lay them payments or whatever? I think you said?
Yeah.
And maybe I'm the wrong person.
I wouldn't say they'll lay them payments, but there's a schedule for the way the payments are coming in. Current what we give, we're fairly likely to give the state a set up special revenue fund in which certain charges that the schools deemed appropriate will be charged directly in that special revenue fund, just like it would be a grant. So you got $500,000 in grant. So now you're allowed to charge any of those expenses associated with monuments to that special revenue fund. But the problem is this closure. We're not getting that forever. But these students, you know, it's like the state.
So, so actually, a couple of things. One is, we can also use it for transportation. So you've had to add two buses this year to transport from the hotels to the schools. And that's part one. We've also used buses to transport the families from the hotels to events at schools, whether it's...
But like, is the cost of that in here?
No.
The cost of that isn't, it's just being paid for by...
Right now, right. And then, so what Charlie just said, that's where I wanted to go, is there's no promise from the state for FY '25 that that $104 a day is going to continue next year.
Okay, all right.
But the positions that were necessary, I mean, the kids are here.
The kids are here.
The positions are here. There are positions that benefit a lot of kids.
Got it. That just popped up. I just didn't know if you factored that in.
No, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sorry.
I'll open it up to you, Dr. Crowley.
I just wanted to preface Dr. Crowley's discussion. I look around this table at the city council, and I think for each of you, Bill, I don't know you that well, but I've come to, what I associate each of you with is the support that you've shown to the schools. That is my primary entry point. That is the school committee's job. The school committee's job is to focus on the needs of our students. Chuck, who's been our school committee liaison for so long, who's passionate advocacy for North Woburn Elementary School, goes noticed by everyone. Joe, a former school committee. Counsel President Dillon, you are a constant presence with us in our schools, with our kids, and it is deeply appreciated. Counsel Perula, you know, your history with the schools is unmatched, and it is appreciated. Counsel Toro, you have kids in the district. You have connections with teachers. Counsel Campbell, my go-to, my counselor, you know, someone who I talk to as regularly as possible about our schools. So what I come to you tonight to say is, we on the school committee can't determine the city's budget. We can't determine the tax rate. We can't determine what is spent on other departments. Our job is to present the city council with the budget that we believe best suits our kids in the most responsible way that we can, in the most fiscally responsible way that we can, in the most educationally responsible way. I believe this is that budget. I recognize the enormity of it. I recognize the size of it. I recognize the historic nature. We are in those kinds of times, right? That's where we are. I have served on the school committee since January 2020. It was a real fun time to join a school committee. I can tell you that. We've been through a lot. It feels like a little bit longer than four plus years. We have enjoyed the support of the city council in that time, and I appreciate that. We need it again. And we need it pretty deeply. Our kids need it. We have seen rapidly rising need. We have seen rapidly rising numbers. This is in some ways a perfect storm of a budget. We have costs in here that we weren't expecting to incur, but they're here. We have teachers and staff who deeply deserve the increases that they have won. And we need to support that. I believe that a lot of the things in this budget, we have seen come down the line. I remember discussions about them last year. We certainly knew the contracts that we signed. We certainly knew that we had extra money that was supporting things that we, you know, to Counsel Campbell's point, literacy programs, literacy positions, that we can absolutely show have had dramatic improvements for our kids, dramatic impacts. Those were positions that we funded up. We need to keep them. So I'm coming here to, and, you know, we have had, without question. We have been, you know, with, with the mayor, with Mr. Dougherty, with City Council President Dillon. We have spent a long time on a regular basis going over the finer points of this budget. It has been, I think, the overall track of it has been well-known to the people in that room, and I think to many others as well. We, I think, I hope, have made the case that there is not much to lose in this budget before it starts very dramatically, very directly impacting our kids. That comes after years of, I don't know what we're calling them these days. I guess we can't call them cuts. We are calling them reductions. We are calling them lots of things. But it comes on the heels of years where we have not gotten what we needed. And now we need it. We have kicked the can down the road. We've kicked lots of cans down the road. And now we've come to the end of it, and we've seen a pile of cans. And we got to deal with it. And that is a job that we have to bear together. That's a job that the city council will bear when it determines our budget number. It's a number that we will bear when we determine what to do with that number. My hope is that that number is the number that is in this booklet, plus $500,000. Courtesy of this justice.
That's in there.
Oh, is it? Okay, good. That is my hope because that will allow us to move forward with the programs that we have built, that have worked, that several members of this council have said have worked, and that we need to continue. That is my hope. I understand that that may not be what happens. That is my hope. I understand that that may not be what happens, that is my hope. I can't affect anything beyond that. So I come to you tonight to ask you to support this budget in its full. Um, it is the needs of our district, we have worked hard at it, we have worked collaboration with people in this room on it, and we stand by. So with that, I'm gonna get it over to Dr. Crowley to talk a little bit about. Let's meet up.
Sure. Um, well, first of all, thank you for inviting us, me, uh, to to the meeting tonight, um, to answer questions. If I may, I'm just gonna kind of contextualize a little bit, and then open it up to any questions people have, I don't know, twenty-eight seems a little bit. Like.
Might be able to do twenty-six.
Yeah.
Institute the Wells rule.
Yeah, um. So.
Appreciate that, Father.
Uh, I'm echoing uh what was said, this has been a collaborative process, so um, to the mayor, to Charlie, to Andrew, to Council President Dylan, um, and then Ms. Ryan and Ms. Young, uh, we've had some productive dialogue, and Ms. Chisholm joined us, um, productive dialogues during our Wednesday meetings. Um, and then one of the things, before I forget to say it, what um, one of, I've enjoyed Tuesday mornings, um, uh, since January, the mayor and I have visited different schools, and we I we've been to all ten at this point. And so we spend over an hour in every school, going into classrooms and seeing that um there are real kids engaged and some incredible teaching going on. And so I think I wanted to mention that because it is an opportunity really to highlight um the needs of the kids, um, but the outstanding educators that we have in the city of Woburn, so I want to say uh thank you to them, um, to all the staff that educate every day our our kids. I know behind me, I don't know who's come in since I came up here, but uh, co-president, uh, Kristi Nickerson was here, so I wanted to say.
Cheers.
So um, that being said, I wanted to um, I call it just babble for a minute. So I've been in Woburn now for nine years, and um, and six as, I'm finishing my sixth year as a superintendent. Um, when I came to Woburn, there were eleven schools, the eight elementary schools, two middle and the high school. And a lot has changed um it over those nine years. Eleven is now ten. But one of the things that happened when I started, if you recall, um, the high school was, the accountability rating went from level two to level three. And one of my questions was, why did, why did that happen, like, what's going on? And so um, that's predicated from DESI, um, there's an accountability rating and a percentile that they look at. One of my findings was that Woburn's curriculum, if you will, wasn't necessarily aligned. And so we went to the Alta Vesta, to the Kennedy, and then to the high school versus the Reeves, the Joyce, and then to the high school. What students were learning was similar, but not completely um aligned. And so one of the things that I prioritized was aligning horizontally so that all second graders would get a similar experience, but also vertically align the curriculum, so that you're not teaching kids how to count money four years in a row, if you will, right? I'm oversimplifying, but I do hope, and I do think, that that effort paid dividends um during COVID. And I'm glad you brought that up, because nobody could have planned for COVID. And so um, one of the things that we did have in place at that point were content specialists and some coordination district-wide to help assist the teachers who are now learning how to teach in a virtual academy or hybrid or whatever the case may be. Um, I will tell you um that the kids, to your point, Ms. Campbell, are are incredibly challenging today um in a way that they were not even just four or five years ago. And so I I always say I'm really proud to be the superintendent in Woburn. I always am proud to be the superintendent in Woburn. I will tell you, um, COVID had a profound impact on our kids, there is a learning loss. Our kids that are five years old today, um, were one when COVID started, they missed preschool, so some of those foundational skills aren't there. So the kids that were five when COVID hit are now in third grade, fourth grade. Um, their reading skills are behind, there's a real learning. There's also uh social emotional development that didn't occur, so um, students didn't learn how to line up when they're at home on the computer. Um, so the needs that we're asking for are real. Um, I'll speak more specifically, and then I'll answer maybe um twelve of Mr. Torro's questions. But um, but one of the things that we've been able to do um is gather data on our kids, we know uh, we don't overly test them, but particularly at the elementary level, um, we've implemented, and your kids probably do this, the wind block, so every, which stands for what I need. Um, and that's possible so that students every day get some, what I need. And they, we create a block of time, and it's predicated on real-time data, we don't wait. MCAS scores don't come back until the fall, after they take, they're taking MCAS now, we don't get the data until the fall, it's I don't wanna say. Well, I don't. It's old news, by the time we get the information. Um, so we've become really good, I believe, at um trying to make um real-time decisions to give the kids what they need. And that's been implemented uh K six over the past few years, and so um, and that's possibly because of the staffing that we have, so um, that being said, um, who are the kids that we have? We have just over four, forty-five hundred students right now. Fourteen point six, or it's, I think it's higher, close to fifteen percent of our kids are EL, which means that they don't speak English when they come into the Woburn Public Schools. Um, when I started nine years ago, that was less than five percent. So the number of students that don't speak English has gone up dramatically. And I, when we go into schools, we we see it, um, and I think that our staff are challenged, uh rightfully so, um, be trying to meet the needs of the of the students, and we want to support them. Over twenty-five percent of our students are on an IEP, so uh, which means that they are special education students. We are legally mandated to service students on an IEP. And two hundred and eighty-seven of our students are on five oh fours, again, um, some form of a look, inability to access the curriculum, so. One of the things that um we've talked about, um, and I don't know if it's too formal a a place, but the class rosters are turning over more than they ever have, so, and I'm saying that because Ms. Nickerson and I have had this conversation. She might have twenty-three kids in her class today, but they're not the same twenty-three that she started the year with. And she can speak to what that means to a class, and so that's on on a micro, on a macro, since September first, we've enrolled over five hundred and nine students in the Woburn Public Schools. Um, we've exited a hundred and seventy-four, so we have three hundred and thirty-five new students to the Woburn Public Schools since September first, that's eight percent of total. And so um who are they? A lot of students now, and I I'll be specific, um, we have, there's a group the DESI has a labels for a lot of different things, um, percent of high-needs students um by school year, and by high-needs, what that means are students that are EL, students that are economically disadvantaged, and students that are on special education plans. And I I went through those percentages independently, but when you merge them, they become your high-needs population. So in twenty twenty, uh, Woburn was at forty-five point four percent. So in October of twenty twenty, we are now at fifty-six point three percent of high-needs. So the majority of our school system is now meeting that high-needs population, and so um, I'm I'm sharing that because the majority of the new positions support the EL and special education students. We're legally mandated to do the majority of that, we're morally mandated to do the all of it, and so there's a genuine um admiration from me to teachers at this point, I've been out of the classroom probably too long. You know, when students come and they they they're not able to speak English, um, they're wearing um real-time translators, or they're using Google's um, Google Translate um to try to uh teach and communicate with all of the kids in front of them. And so um, it's awesome to go and see, I would welcome any one of you to come into the schools, I'm, you know, I'm happy to tour a school with you, so you can see uh what it is that I'm genuinely talking about. You know, we, I I say this annually, and I really mean it, I think it's, and I don't wanna speak for the mayor, but I, you know, I I do, I think he likes hanging out with me Tuesday mornings. But um, and uh, again, I I'm respectful of the city, I I say this to the mayor. I, you know, I understand that there's a a pie and there's pieces that need to get cut up. My job is to advocate for the kids and the staff of the Woburn Public Schools, that's my job. And I feel like this budget does that, I want to absolutely acknowledge that it's historic, I I I understand that. But again, I feel like it's, it's a real budget, um, and I can, I can give you a couple of examples. Our substitute line item um has gone up dramatically, um, because that's, we we think that's the number that we're really gonna need. Our electricity has gone up because we think that's the number that we're really gonna need. Um, in the past, we've, you know, we try to reduce some line items that aren't student-facing to be fiscally more how to say it, to 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 be be more cognizant of the overall percent of the budget, so. I'll I'll stop there, I think you've got twenty-eight questions. I'll reduce it a little bit. Council, um, DeMambro.
Dr. Crowley. And again, the teachers do a phenomenal job. I, and that's why I push for new schools and this and that, so they can have the hardware to do what they need to do with the latest and greatest technology to do it, so, you know, we can make the most out of what we have and what we can offer the kids. My question to you is, is there any way the federal government, I mean, you put out some great statistics. Is the federal government aware of this, do they offer grants, do they offer any type of funding to support the numbers and the percentages that you stated?
So it's a good question, I appreciate it. The 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 answer is, um, ESER was the grant that the federal government uh provided, and that that goes away this year. Um, we do get federal entitlement grants, Title I, Title II, III, IV, so we do get grants that, but everybody gets that, and those are predicated on, um, you have to qualify based on socioeconomic status um for those, or EL status, it's not enough, um, we do fund some positions through those federal grants, um. And, you know, the state, again, we, uh, to your question earlier, you know, with the newly arrived students, um, it would be great if the state were to say, we're, because we don't know when those, we have approximately seventy students currently every day um attending, and if they're gonna be attending in the, we we're planning on them attending. Um, so we need to staff them for that. Okay, thank you. President Dylan?
Yes, thank you. So uh, Councilor Papalato and Councilor DeMambro touched on it a little bit. But I wanna make it really clear to the general public, because out there there are some that will say our budget is, your budget is like this because of the migrant situation. I wanna make that clear, that that is not the situation that we have approximately eighty students, and that we are getting paid, and that that, shall I say, idea is not the case.
That's completely accurate, yes, thank you for 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 making that statement.
Okay, my second question being, you just touched on it. I've written here that we have seven elementary schools, five of them are Title I, correct?
Four are Title I.
Four are Title, thank you. Um, are we making sure and checking every box and getting every bit of federal money, nothing slipping through the cracks and all those Title I, we have a checklist that's getting done?
Yes. Yeah, we we are absolutely trying to get um each and every penny.
Okay, great, thank you. And my last question is more on the redistricting. And this may be from how I was thinking, so this is great, we had this opportunity to talk. When we initially thought about redistricting, we thought it was going to function per to fix two problems. One, we could get some money to help the budget. Okay, make some cuts, so that it would help. Two, it would give equity throughout the system. Based on recent meetings, I'm not seeing that the redistricting is really gonna help us financially. True or false statement?
I'd say it's there would, yeah, probably a true statement.
Okay.
I mean.
So my my second part of that question is I understand the equity. And believe me, I want every child, every student, and three grandkids that are one already presently going to the school system. I want them to have the best educational experience. And here's where we differ a little bit, that we can afford. And that may sound terrible, but you know what's terrible? The part that we have no choice if we pass this budget to go up dramatically on the taxes. And the people that we're trying to help, the people that we care about the most, that are working through jobs, trying to pay a mortgage, that are working through jobs, trying to pay the rent that keeps escalating. We're gonna bury them. We're gonna tax them into the Stone Age. I just say that because I understand and I hear what you're saying. But there's the other side of the coin, that we're gonna figure this out, that's why I'm coming up with Title I and seeing if we're missing something, and I knew we weren't, because you guys do do a great job getting the available funds. But we have the seniors living pensions, social security. We hit them with a five, six, seven, eight hundred dollar tax increase. And we're probably gonna do it again next year if we can figure this out. And I guess it would be easy to try to take from our rainy day funds, and I I applaud Councilor Campbell for looking at that, but I hesitate when I think, whoever heard of PFAS three years ago, four years ago, now we have to find twenty-one million dollars to build a new plant? Whoever heard of the pandemic before it happened? The last one was way back then, before any of us were around. Who knows what's coming around the corner? And everyone that has a home, that has a family, knows you have to have a rainy day fund. And that's what it should be, I agree. I guess we could call this crisis, but I'm not sure I feel comfortable going anywhere near that. That's uh my two cents worth, thank you.
Can I just, would you mind if I?
Please.
And I, you know, you you and I have talked about it.
We have.
Funny, and and I I've had conversations with with many of you that that sort of, you know, on on some of these. I appreciate the passion that you have and the support that you have for. I appreciate the passion that you have and the support that you have for every vulnerable resident of the city.
Thank you.
And then that and and that shines through. I also want to really genuinely thank you. For your comments regarding our migrant students. You know, I think there's been a lot of misinformation out there. These, you know, as I've said, like, it doesn't matter if your if your family's been here for five generations or five minutes. You are our kids. You are our job, just the same as anybody else. And I I appreciate you trying to correct some of that here. I think the thing that people are happy to say in private. Maybe not happy, but willing to say in private, that are, they are often not willing to say in public. Is that the city of Woburn has undertaxed its residents for a long time. And that part of the reason why we are here is because of that. It may require correction. I'll point out, I'm looking around the state. I understand five hundred dollars is a lot. I'm a two public school teacher household. I understand that very well. I teach in Bill Regan. Bill Regan's had two five hundred dollar tax increases in the last three years. Other communities have as well. They have seniors on fixed incomes. They have people who are low income. That is not to say that it is easy to do that. That is not to say say that it is right to do that, but it is to say. It is not outside of the realm of what is done. When the need is there. Again, as I said before, my job is not to tell you how to budget. My job is not to tell you how to tax. My job is not to tell you how to run other departments in the city. But it is to advocate for our kids and our teachers and our district. And when I see a city that regularly comes in under surrounding communities. In terms of what we are willing to spend our revenue or what what we are willing to raise in terms of revenue, and that impacts our schools. That is where I feel compelled to speak up on that. You know, the school committee is is sort of unique in that our primary constituency is a group of people who can't vote for us. That is the children, right? And so, you know, I. I will, I will be the one to say it out loud. Yes, we need to raise taxes in the city. I'll say it. And, you know, voters can do with me as they will on that particular point. But we sit here because we haven't been willing to say it out loud and because we haven't been willing to do it.
And I appreciate your comments. And as you say, you and I have had some spirited conversations back and forth and I. Great respect for you and I consider you a friend and we put that aside and we go outside and we shake and. That's a great part of this whole process. But the other communities that you may be speaking about. Aren't fortunate enough to have the commercial and the industry. That's how our tax rate stays down. My opinion is not that we're undertaxed, that we're so fortunate that we have the commercial, the businesses. Were at that section of one twenty eight ninety three that all these places want to be. That's how we're pulling the lower taxes. Just my opinion. And and going back just a little bit about the redistricting and the raising the taxes. What we have in Woburn is a blue collar city, in my opinion, working class city till this day. I say that and the average house is what, five hundred thousand dollars, if not more. But. Here's the big thing. We have a lot of renters too. And if we go up seriously in the tax rate on the landlords. We all know what they're going to do. They're going to bottom number. They're going to pass it on to the people like you and I. Try to protect and help every day. So those are my comments and I appreciate the time.
And you and I, I'm sure many others could go back and forth on this for quite some time. We'll spare folks time.
Thank you.
Counselor Chorl. Thank you. Dr. Crowley, a couple of questions follow up on yours. Just since I would a couple of questions. You referenced the one oh four per day and that has been allocated through fiscal year twenty four. Maybe this is a question for Charlie. They have yet to determine fiscal year twenty five. Do we have an idea as to when, if they were to do that, do we have an indication on when that would be? And if it is after this budget is passed, seems like that's somewhere in the realm. It could be one point two million, right? How does that factor into revenue for the school department? And, you know, is there a way if, let's say hypothetically speaking, the budget was passed, just say as is. For that, for the city to take that money back and utilize it somewhere else? How does that work? I don't know if Charlie, if that's a question for you, sorry.
There have been, there have been discussions.
We keep asking, so I.
So it's an unknown idea right now. To your point of revenue that comes in after the end of fiscal year. Which already would have been spent money. I don't know how the school department plans on using that next year if you're building those dollars. Into this budget for personnel this year. That would be something the school would have to discuss.
Because we are technically, again, as the budget stands, providing you the funds for that now. With the kind of the understanding that we don't think we're going to go, not that we don't think, but we're not getting that money. With the understanding that we don't think we're getting that money, but if we get that money, again, not that I don't want the schools to have extra money. But we're 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 in a situation where every dollar counts and that's one point two million dollars, right? Kid, is there a way for us to pull back one point two million in funding, essentially a wash and keep that money? Is that is that a possibility? You you know, I don't, again, I don't know. This is, I don't want to say it would be unfair to give you the extra one point two million dollars. Because I'm sure you would utilize it in a in an efficient way, but understanding the circumstances, it's a it's a valid question that needs to be addressed and answered. You know, and I would like to know that answer. That's number one. You know, one of my probably twelve questions and the twenty five, it's only twenty five. Is I saw throughout the budget, large increases in in random items. Like there were, there were some with. Fifty percent budget increases for office supplies and. PD lineup, our line item was up eighty four percent. The substitute line item was up X amount. And I, and from what I understand, and it might not hold true for every single one of those items. But it seems like compared to years past, what you're trying to do is really budget for what you expect this year, which I understand. But, for instance, the substitute line item, I think, for instance, and again, I could be a little bit off. Maybe in fiscal year twenty twenty three, it was about quarter of a million dollars. You spent. Maybe it was three hundred thousand dollars or something to that effect. In, or five hundred fifty thousand you budgeted for fiscal year twenty four. And you're looking for eight hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty twenty five. So I guess my question is. The budgeted amount for fiscal year twenty twenty four, I know we still have a little bit of time. Are are we going to reach five fifty? Is it going to be less? I just, I look at some of these budgeted items and I have to defer to the mayor, I think. But in a situation like this, if we can go back and trim some of the projected amounts. And if we actually hit those numbers and you come back for a true allocation of funds for actual expenses. I'd personally be more willing to give that money for actual expenses as opposed to say eight hundred thousand for substitutes. You spend six fifty. And now, again, you have an extra hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in your budget. It's extra money for you guys. Again, I I don't want to. Nickel and dime every every dollar of you guys, but at the same time, hundred and fifty thousand here, fifty thousand here, twenty thousand. If that adds up to three, four hundred thousand dollars. It's it's still a decent amount of money. I I'll go on record that that ten point eight million dollar. Starting budget before last night, I didn't think there was a substantial amount of fat to trim. And I don't even like to use that word fat, right? But if we could trim these several hundred thousand dollars from there potentially, and this is my own opinion only. I'm not speaking for the council. It just, it seems like. There are some items here that, again, we might be going tit for tat and twenty thousand here, forty thousand dollars here. These can equate out to some real potential numbers, whereas if they were spent. I would be okay. Again, another one is the three hundred thousand dollar line item for overtime for school facilities. Two fifty was budgeted, I believe, again, I'm I'm, this is off the top of my memory, two fifty was budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty four. I think. Hold on, I think twenty twenty three might have been two hundred and ten thousand. Again, I own a business. I pay out overtime. I can also control that, you know, at the end of the day. Instead of budgeting for three hundred, again, I don't know what we are at for fiscal year twenty twenty four now. If we're going to hit two fifty, we're going to go over, we're going to be under. But why couldn't we go to, say, projected bu- uh, projected budget of two hundred thousand, trim a hundred grand off of that? And if it's true that you need fifty grand more, again, midway through, I can't speak for everybody. I I would feel more comfortable providing money in real time for actual expenses spent. That if you said, hey, we incurred these expenses as opposed to saying, we think we're going to do that. And at the end of the year, we look back and there's four hundred thousand dollars in projected expenses that you could save. And I I would, I would commend you for that, but I would say, I want the money back. I want the money back for the city. You know what I mean? And I don't think we can do that because once we allocate you the funds. I just, again, this is more on a business standpoint and that that premise that I'm going on is a direct. Instance where we're not cutting or laying off any teachers, any positions. This is just line items for office supplies. Potential overtime, things like that. I just feel like there's a couple hundred thousand dollars and you might need a hundred thousand of that back. At the, you know, six months from now. But there's a potential that we can save a little bit of money there. Every dollar counts and it has zero impact, zero potential impact on our children. It just, to me, it's a no brainer. You know, again, I speak only for myself. I I don't know if this, I just kind of rambled on for a minute, but I'll give it back to you on that.
So I, let me try to answer your questions. The substitute line item. Esser is covering some of that too this year. We increased the substitute pay during COVID because we couldn't get people to come in. And people were sick, obviously. So we went from ninety dollars a day to a hundred and twenty five dollars a day. So we also have more staff who are out for valid reasons. For long term issues. So. Again, the proj- so I guess I'm going to answer you very candidly.
Sure, yeah.
Right? So I think the budget is eight hundred thousand. That's what we think we need. If if you want, and this is what I'm hearing, we could budget at five hundred thousand, right? And then. I'll come back in January and say, I missed missed bud, you know, I didn't budget correctly. Like, you know, that's that's why. The goal really is to try to budget for what we need and to to follow up. And we've talked about this on in Wednesday meetings. Where if there is money, it hasn't happened much, but it has happened. Where the school department has turned money back over to the city at the end of the year. So that that can happen.
That, I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, is that, we have ours.
In in the twenty four years, I was on city cows here. I've seen it one year. It's five hundred thousand dollars. That was during the COVID. And then our transportation, everything else was reduced. So there was significant money left on the table. So five hundred thousand was given back to the city. At that time, that's when we created the stabilization account for the sped program. And it was in a collaborative environment. We said, you know what, I've never seen it before, but if you guys are willing to turn money back, we'll create a stabilization account. Those are one time we got. Everything's been attitude since then has benefited the city, helping the sped because we know it's an ongoing issue. So to your point, I would look at the nine hundred and fifty line items of budget that the schools have. And if we're looking at it a way to say, how do we honestly say we truly budgeting line item correctly? At the end of the year, prove out each one of those line items that that money was spent for that cost. And if there was any adjustment movement of money or other issues that happened, that shows us that we need appropriately funded. Some line items may be underfunded or older. And that would give us a better idea at the end of the year, especially for next year's budget. Because whatever we approved this year is the new base for next year, no matter how much we spent. So and it, you know, it might not be needed, but I'm just saying that's the true way to go at true costs.
Which is tough to do right now because we won't get those costs until half the time we pass this budget, essentially. I just look at it as if, if we can, if we can reduce some of these projections. And have to give out three hundred thousand dollars in total revenue to the school department. As opposed to potentially a lot, again, I I hate to say this, it makes me sound bad, but allow you to keep three hundred thousand dollars in excess income. I'd rather do that and and save the city, keep the money on the city side with us increasing the budget. So substantially, again, not saying that it's not necessary, right?
We have had those very specific conversations in a number of different categories. And we, maybe a candid pledge, that if we chose that option, to keep the money on the city side. And we legitimately legitimately learned that we had underfunded on the school side. We would support the request to the city council for the additional fund. There's, there's one area in particular, it's the special ed stabilization fund that comes along. But there are other discussions as well. I mean, the the redistricting and the early retirement categories. We genuinely believe in savings in the early retirement option. Last night at the school committee meeting, there was an effort to to make that expectation zero, totally effortless. I would have suggested you make it higher. And if you don't meet your number and you demonstrate you've done everything you can. Then we come down and we ask for more money because we missed our mark. I would say the same is true of the redistricting. First time we talked about. First couple of times talking about redistricting in my office during one of our many, many, many weekly meetings. We had an expectation that redistricting, while being done for the educational benefits. And the equity for all students in the city would likely yield at least a couple of million dollars in savings based on rough numbers. That number turned turned into five hundred thousand dollars. And then it turned into zero. To your point. I'd be willing to put a place at a number that we think realistic, perhaps. Optimistic. And if we did everything we're supposed to do to try to meet the number, and then we just didn't. For nobody's fault, then we come down as a team, we sit down in this room, we talk about whether it's time to add money to that account. I gave the pledge that I would take that position. Yeah, here we are.
And to, to, one more, man, I'll. And to build off that point, and I and I spoke to Chair Lipsett about this today, that, you know. I would be at the very basic basis, at the very basic level. Be making a motion to add or reduce. This budget by half a million dollars to symbolize my decision or my request to have that redistricting. Put back into the budget because I think during the multiple conversations I've had. You know, I wasn't privy to the conversations of two, three, four million dollars outside of just conversation. But I think even in the school committee meeting yesterday, Andrew. Someone asked the, you know, about the consultant and what the potential savings were. And I think the the answer to that question was anywhere from two to three to six hundred thousand dollars. So my my thought here is, we're all making tough decisions, every single one of us. And to pull that out because of what if we don't redistrict, what if it doesn't save this money, what if this, what if, there's a lot of what ifs and potentials. And I think the mayor has made it clear in this room that if all avenues were explored. And that didn't actually come to the point where, come to fruition. That we could have that candid conversation and and Counselor Campbell, who's been on the council a lot longer than I have. Referenced the fact that this council has always supported the request from our school department for funding increase. So it's, you know, throw us a bone here and and put that line, put that line item back in at five hundred thousand. Which is much less than what even the mayor would like to see. And throw us a bone to 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 get this back down. And I know I'm going to make that motion to reduce it by at least half of a million dollars. And I'm sure there's going to be others as well, but that is my, that would be my request, just so you know. And we're not talking about this at that point. It's just a Q and A, but but go ahead. I think you.
Yeah. And and thank you for 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 your thoughts on that. I, so I I I'm I'm not sure, I know, you know, many of you have been following this from the start. I want to make sure we we sort of have a broad sense of of redistricting in terms of why the committee. Voted to begin looking at it and and where those discussions have gone since. Initially, you know, this is an issue that we've been tracking in the schools for quite some time. We have had to move some of our sub separate programs pretty regularly in order to try to manage some of our space issues in the schools. The growing imbalance in our. The growing imbalance in our districting, the last time that Woburn redistricted was in the late nineteen eighties, uh, so we're talking about nearly forty years ago. We have, you know, we have seat space available in our schools. It is not equitably distributed. We have at the, at this moment students who are receiving education in non-standard educational facilities, hallways at the Good Year, for example. That was the initial reason. That and and the, you know, growing preschool population, some of the space issues around that, which has exacerbating effects, right? That's eight classrooms at the Reeves, four four classrooms at the Shamrock. That adds some pressure to our classroom situation. And so those were the initial reasons why we started to look at redistricting. In our regular meetings with the mayor, with Charlie, um, with with Jeff, um, we had talked about it from that perspective. And there was certainly a question as to whether or not it would save us money. Um, you know, I don't I have heard numbers, uh, it's probably, I, you know, I don't recall those numbers um being estimated by the school department, but but I understand that's that's what maybe was heard. But regardless of of where those estimates are, we we began to work hard at this to look at what redistricting would do for our students and as an ancillary, what it might save the city, right? We hired a consultant who has done this countless times over a long, long period of time. Um, and what he came back to us with were opti- were five different options. The lowest of which I believe, and maybe Ms. Young can correct me if I'm wrong here, was save the district around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the highest within six hundred and seventy-five-ish, right? Those were based on someone who knows what they're doing when it comes to redistricting telling us what we have. So, you know, our our school department runs our schools incredibly well. We haven't redistricted before, uh, so we relied on our experts to do that and to let us know how this would go. Um, and those are the numbers that came back. Now, the consultant also added in there that two of those options, options one and options five, were the ones that had the the best chance of delivering what our students needed over a long period of time so that we wouldn't have to bring this back to our families again, which we don't want to do, right? We don't want to redistrict multiple times in a ten to twelve year span, right? Uh, and so though I believe the estimates for those are in the three hundred range. There is discussion in the committee about whether or not this is going to go forward. Uh, and and so I think, you know, Mrs. Childs' motion and and the committee vote the other night was to respect the the possibility that it didn't. Uh, I understand that vote. And so that's sort of the story of how we got to these figures. This was not initially, um, or in my view, primarily about this will save the city. That was a benefit that we hoped to accrue when we put in what we believed was the best placeholder at the time. We've seen subsequent information and we've started to adjust that. Uh, I understand that, you know, the optics of that, especially last night, may not have been what people were hoping for from us. But it is our effort to run the best budgeting process that we can to be as honest with the taxpayers and as honest with the council and as honest with the mayor as we can be about our budget. Uh, I think that that is something that's that we have been striving to do and that we have an opportunity to do this year. Um, and I hope that that also doesn't go unnoticed um by either the council or by the taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilors.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, both gentlemen. I just wanted to recognize the, our colleagues in the crowd, uh, Ms. Chisholm, Ms. Cormier, Ms. Batzall, I have from the school committee. I didn't think they were recognized early, so I just wanted to thank them. Thank them for being here. With regards to free cash, this is a, this is a discussion I probably had throughout my adult professional life in politics with one mayor and a state rep. When it comes down to free cash, though, my only concern when, you know, we are having a rainy day right now, this is a crisis point, okay? But when we start using free cash on costs that will be recurring in our next budget, it's not good budgeting process because then we'll be using free cash again and again and again and again until free cash is gone or it's lower to the point that when we do come to a decision on consolidating the Linsken School and the AltaVesta or the two middle schools and we go to borrow, our bond rating has dipped lower than what it's previously at and we're ask- asking taxpayers to fund those those purchases with a higher interest rate. That means longer debt service in our in our budgeting process when it comes to paying those off. And that's that's a, that's a long term concern. If we want to talk about kicking the can down the road, that would be kicking the can down the road. Uh, the other thing that's concerning, and I think, you know, Audit had already alluded to it, is that what from from my understanding, um, these are all recurring costs in this budget. In terms of, in terms of the fourteen point three four percent, that's baked into our budget for next year. So the budget level we're at, it's not like we have one time capital expenses in this budget is the point I'm trying to make.
No, there's no capital expenses in here.
Correct. So that is something that we're gonna have to have in the next budget. So this isn't just like a one time one time payment. This is gonna be baked in to our tax structure moving forward. Um, so I think that's important to note because I think there was that little moment there where I think there was a misunderstanding that this is where these positions aren't going away. And it worries me because, you know, we talked about the Esser funds before. And I know multiple counselors at those meetings stated, you know, we don't want to be funding positions out of these Esser funds because they're gonna go away and then we're gonna be sitting here and this is exactly what ended up happening. We're here with one point seven million dollars of Esser funds that are gonna be gone. Uh, so that's, that's, that's a concern that I have because it was discussed to try to bake that into the budget at some point. And with it going away, that's an added issue. The other concern I have is the the, you know, the one that has been discussed a few times and tonight and it's gonna be another cost that we're gonna incur if the Commonwealth doesn't continue offering the per pupil expenses for migrant migrant students in the district. So that's another thing that is baked into the budget that is gonna have to be taken care of. So this is all my concern with the free cash, the free cash idea. If there was a a reading curriculum that we needed to take care of one year for three hundred thousand dollars or, you know, certain hardware or whatnot that are one time expenses, that's when we could go to the the trough for the for the free cash and do it. I think going there for operating expenses, you know, it's just, it it'll, it'll end up haunting us. Cities and towns that you see doing these overrides in other communities are doing the overrides constantly because they're doing it for operating expenses because the operating expenses don't go away. Uh, some of those capital expenses, you can make it five to ten years down the line without having to uh to re-up on them. Uh, with regards to redistricting, kind of a macro level, and bear with me, I did not follow the debate on that because as as a member of the city council, I've got my own plate of issues to deal with. Uh, but when it comes to redistricting, have we, you know, I, uh, to my understanding, it was that there was concern that the lack of redist- districting would impact any future application to the MSBA for uh reimbursement through funding uh if we if we didn't do any redistricting. So I just wanted that to be flushed out for us so that everybody's on board with that because Councilor Demambo and I serve on the uh capital planning and building committee. And I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page because the last thing we want to do is impact Woburn's ability to get that reimbursement from the Commonwealth to make sure that we have the equity in our school structures for all students.
Sure, I'll take it. So we we're working, um, we actually have a meeting tomorrow night and um Donna Dinesco, Dinesco Design, who's the author of the feasibility study, is coming at six o'clock tomorrow night to the Joyce to the
Will be the.
To the building um ad hoc committee. What she said was one of the factors that the MS MSBA looks at is utilization and we have empty seats in a lot of different places. And so redistricting could be a way to uh increase the the utilization of buildings so that it, the MSBA would look more favorably at us.
Yeah, I mean, that would just be concerning because, I mean, there's only so many years we can kick that can down the road as well, where we're, but we're talking about educational equity and there's two elementary schools that are behind uh their cohorts.
I do wanna, if I could just
Yes.
Uh, I do want to just remember to make it clear that the the primary reason we we started looking at redistricting was the pressures that our classrooms and our kids are under right now. Budgetary concerns, NSBA concerns, these are real, these are potential benefits to the city, both short and long term. Uh, those were not the initial goals of redistricting. And I, I I'm I'm saying this really much more broadly for the public because I know that there's been a lot of discussion around why we are doing this and whether or not it is to save money for the city side or 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 do better when we have an MSBA application. The 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 reason we're doing this is to the benefit of our kids, the benefit of our teachers, the benefit of our children. That's not a correction to you, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I I agree with the holistic approach. I'm just saying there's important cards to this wheel that we need to be mindful of. Two major issues that when I served on the school committee, we constantly discussed and I, you know, bear with me because I've been out of the school committee for quite some time now, actually, and I think two things, one, one of them was I always harped and Matt, Matt's smirking because he knows probably where I'm going with this. I always harped on a long term district staffing plan. So that we had maybe a three to five year staffing plan with regards to what we need, what we are foreseeing we may need. I know there's gonna be these, you know, you know, things are gonna happen where a position that we might not have ever thought about needing or a need for our students would arise. I mean, this came out when we were basically yearning for uh the BCBAs, behavioral, op- certified behavioral analysts, and it kept getting one of those items that get getting pushed down the road. So is there any thought, almost like a capital plan for human resources? Just to make sure that we have that long range vision? So that, so that, you know, we as a council and you folks as the schools can work towards that together so there's no surprises moving forward in budgetary times?
Yeah, so I I I thought this is where you were gonna go. And I, but I think that you, this was pre-COVID.
Correct.
And so
All my ideas in the school committee.
You missed a few things over the last four years.
You know, so that uh a lot of the things, we, who would have predicted?
Right.
Um, and so that being said, um, we are in the process now of trying to draft a three year uh plan predicated on this budget and then the next two years looking forward. I think looking too far beyond three years really is hard.
Totally understood.
How can you predict that there's gonna be a pandemic or the special ed population increases or whatever the case may be? But we are cognizant of trying to um build out, you know, a personnel
Right.
Plan.
Yeah, because I think, you know, one of the concerns I have when I was on the school committee was we were dealing with things and that was thir- twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen for Rudy, whose concern. We were dealing with getting Woburn into the twenty first century, fifteen years into the twenty first century in certain areas. When it came with curriculum coordination, I know, I remember working with you when I was the curriculum chair of uh, was it Atlas, Rubicon Atlas?
Yeah.
So all that, all that stuff was basically bringing Woburn to where other districts had been, had been for twenty years. Okay, so that that was, that's what, that's things I can be happy about in the sense of those are the things we should be investing in to bring Woburn around. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk about, and it's always a budgetary matter, every budget, it's just that giant chunk of the budget that really hurts is that out of district. So looking long range here in terms of investments in our district, are there further investments that we can make that would keep some of these out of district placements in the district so that our special ed students are being taken care of within the district? Now, I know firsthand that there are gonna be some students that regardless of what types of programs we build in the district, would we be able to take care of? It's just there's some people with needs that are just too high for what a public school district can take care of, but are there plans to bring some of those students home and build out a program that addresses certain needs? So that those are in-house teaching positions and we're not spending so much by sending them so far away and then having to deal with the individual student transportation costs?
So I'm gonna give you a couple different answers. Bringing students back to Woburn is challenging once students have been placed out of district. The programs that we have built over the past few years, and Maureen Ryan's here, um, I don't, you didn't overlap with
I did not.
Her because
I just missed her.
Yeah, and you
She's, she's probably glad she just missed me.
No, she like, she's, and well, Charlie and and the ma- like, there's an appreciation for what the level of detail that um Maureen manages of us with and an appreciation from the city to, we we appreciate the one point eight million. And I I would venture to say there's mutual respect, we're, we're doing the best we can. It's incredibly challenging um to predict who's gonna move in to the city. We have built the game program at the Good Year and the Kennedy. Uh, and now at the high school, we built a SOAR program that for students, that that's a new program for students that would be it's an acronym. Um, it's at the Malcolm White School. We anticipated maybe twelve students, it's over twenty. Um, the uh low cognition profile for that, we built that uh program over the last couple of years. Our PALS program at the Reeves Elementary School keeps kids in district. Um, so what I've learned, because I'm not a special educator, is it costs money and to staff up the special education department, but it's still cheaper than sending kids out of district because we have kids that go out of district anywhere from one hundred thousand to four hundred thousand, one, one student. So we might have students move in that costs four hundred thousand dollars for a residential placement. Then uh we we tried to budget for, but it's really a challenge.
Right.
And I think that's important, if I
Yes, sure.
I think that's important to note that the, the work that we've been doing over the past several years, it, I mean, there's no way to estimate savings uh to the, to the district, to the city from that, but but there have been savings.
But it also seems like every time that we do incur savings, there's another thing that comes up. There's another mandate, there's a pandemic, there's, you know, different, it's just how life goes. We have to react to certain things that come up. I think one of the important things that I'd encourage through through Chairman Viola to President Dylan is that, you know, one of the previous practices we had in working in collaboration with both the city council and the school committee was to at least have every six months, I would even venture to say we should be having a quarterly mea- meeting and liaison where we can be informed by a lot of these, about a lot of these because it's very difficult for the school department to come here in the budget season and let us know every exact thing that has been done during the year that's new and different. So I think maybe having that revived, I know uh former school committee member, uh, Rick Metters had started that about seven years ago. And it was very fruitful because we're all on the same page and we're all in it together. And I think that would be important so that we don't end up having situations like this where tempers flare, people get a little hot under the collar and then, you know, we we really want to get back to working together productively to make sure that we move the district forward, so.
And that's something Dr. Colley Oh, I, uh, Dr. Colley have discussed that and we're sort of working towards scheduling that and and then we had giant budgets and redistricting.
No, totally understood.
Come our way. Uh, we'll be forward. It's definitely something.
I think that would be fruitful for everybody involved. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make a five minute uh break, take a five minute?
Motion for a five minute break. Second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion. Do I have a motion to return?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, Councilor Campbell.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just want to clarify a couple of things. Thank you, Councilor Demers, uh, talking about the free cash. I have a couple of questions that I want to ask Charlie about it. But I, what I want to explain, it's, it's what my understanding is, um, what the free cash is from. The free cash is from the real estate taxes and the, even the extra tax, um, taxes by the amount of people that are in the city. So we get this surplus at the end of the year. And in a sense, every year, this is gonna sound crazy, I'm sure, but we really should be cutting our taxes because in a sense, we're getting in more money than we need from the residences. From our tax, what what we are taxing them. Uh, but of course, we really can't do that because But of course, we really can't do that because it, it just, it's not good practice to do that. Because we're already been 0% for so many years. So in a sense, we're already overtaxing the residents of Woburn. So if, I know, I will ask, because I wanna make sure, I might be incorrect. If we are doing $10 million, I do understand that it would be year after year, I do know that. But not even, just even a couple of years ago, we were only at 25 million, now we're at 42 million free cash. I feel that we're in a crisis point right now in thinking about where this school budget is. Do I wanna be here? No, absolutely not. I do not wanna increase taxes, I'll tell you. I will not support an increase in taxes. We have got to figure out with the monies that we have as a city, which I do believe we have surpluses, and we have much, there has to be a way that we can do it, help with the budget, get it to where it needs to be without raising taxes. Now, maybe not, but if we can use the free cash that we're getting, this is not free cash, this is, in a sense, be, overtaxing, in a sense. Am I right, Charlie? Can you explain that?
I've heard the way free cash happens, any surplus, if we do an $80 million budget, but yet we only spend 70 million, that means you could add 10 million back to the cash. Because basically conservatives didn't use it, and this usually happens from the city side. If we have, you know, roughly $80 million on the city side of the budget, we might only spend 85, I mean, 75 million dollars. Definitely they have 5 million of that direct free cash bill that yet, it just gets conservative management budget, right? Now, the other side is, it's also local receipts, as they come in, if they come in all over expected local receipts, I've used a separate budget. We historically, a lot of towns will overestimate their local receipts and not make their mark, and then it hurts when they do with their taxes, right? But we're pretty conservative, we usually have a couple of million dollar bill on that side too. Now, historically, the advice of our bond rating council and everyone else at credit rating boards, think of 40 million as 20%, right? Just like with your house, they'd save 33 months minimum of it. And that's what we have, so even though we're at 40 million now, and we might have 25 billion, you know, six years ago, 25 billion, what 120 million dollar budget was then, was still in line. But we're not, it's growing, but it's proportionally growing to the budget, might be better. We've also, the way we've helped the city expenses over the last 10-plus years is that we've been doing an aggressive capital budget every year that we use free cash to pay for. And that, and that way there, we've been able to save the taxpayers' money by not budgeting hundreds of thousands of dollars in each department for capital. We do it as a free cash buy every year. And that's been, it's been allowed us to build and keep consistent as the budget grows, as a certain percentage of the budget that the bond council likes to see, but also allows us to have that excess capacity on an annual basis to do the capital. And that's kinda how we've done it.
Is it unreasonable to think that we could at least partially use some of that free cash to help to subsidize the schools? Or would that affect our bond rating detrimentally?
In, in the, in the one year?
In the short term?
No, because you're only be using a certain component. But the compounding impact of it is that even if you use just 2 million-ish, right, offset budget, that 2 million is, even though we say, you know, it's round numbers, 98 million, right? That would be the budget if we took 2 million offset, so it's not 100 million. Next year, that budget's true starting point is 100 million. Because all you did was use other money, not the budget. So your percent increase next year is already elevated a minimum 2% because you used 2 million dollars this year. So we already know next year, we're still gonna have about 6% in salary costs next year, there's gonna be some excess costs to go with everything. So that would put us, realistically, next year we'll probably at 7%. And that's a good idea, right? Using free cash, we'd have started putting 9% minimum. So, would it help us this year? Yes. But there's just compounds the problem. I mean, and I think this goes back to the point that we have a long history and most of the credit boards in the world don't want communities spending free cash on operations. Because it's not really solving the issue, it's really just pushing it to the next year. And if we thought next year, oh, things are gonna all get better, we're gonna be back down to 3%. We know that. So really, it's just gonna compound the problem to next year, to the city. So, I mean, my recommendation would be not to use free cash, but I understand the idea that it is a way to look at. We did it several years ago when John Connaughton was mayor. We used free cash to offset the shop increase we had in healthcare costs that year, and everyone thought it was great, but kind of pick this in the box the next year, and we went to set the trajectory the next year.
But most cities and towns do not have the type of free cash that we have.
Most cities and towns, and I think this was to the point that Andrew brought up earlier, you know, saying that Woburn doesn't tax itself now is somewhat misleading. Because to get those 4.38% annual raises for 10 years in your budget, plus the 7% last year, plus the 14% this year, there's a huge commitment to capital outlay. We might not raise the taxes, but the capital, I mean, the funding component has been aggressive year over year for the city of Woburn. And we've been able to do that on the school side by averaging about 1.6% to 1.7% on the city side. We're starting to see disproportion between, we're addressing all these schools. We've got some serious staffing issue on the city side, we haven't been able to address because it's all going to one side. And I think, you know, it's, we don't do that for so long, for 14 years. It's kinda at the point now, this is a 200 million dollar operation. Schools have their side to watch, but we watch the whole 200 million in action. And we don't have the staff to do it on our side, so we, it's not gonna be as a problem to get solved this year.
Right, no, no, we absolutely do, and that's what I said at the very beginning, I mean, we have been low on staffing for so long. But once again, we, I'm an optimist. We, because of real estate and Woburn being so valuable, our real estate taxes have gone, I mean, the amount that we're bringing in is tremendous. It has, it has got to have increased incredibly.
The amount we brought in has increased, but to the expense of taxpayers. The houses are worth, as we said, the average of it was high 500,000. And because that people paying the same house, the problem we're facing this year and probably into the next couple of years, because we are in somewhat of a recession, I mean, I know everyone talks about the great economies, but there's a slowdown. Capital is not being involved with corporate companies to invest in corporate sector. Because of that, corporate valuations are low, it's not going down. Residential, because it's still a great area to live, our assessments are going up. So this year, if we're going off, seeing projecting what the tax bill might be, reality is though, it might even adjust more to the residential side because nearly all the show of the real growth and bounty as compared to the commercial side is flat, so.
So in a sense, that, I mean, that is taxing, in a sense, which will go then to free cash. I guess that's where my mind is, is coming to. But I do wanna thank Chairman Dylan, you very eloquently talked about the seniors and many individuals because we are having issues with inflation, for sure. And I, I think we've real, I, there, to me, then there is a way to do this without really hurting both sides, and I'm hoping that we're gonna be able to reach that. Thank you.
Anybody else, council member?
My question is to Charlie. Charlie, let's say we take this budget and we approve it. How does that hurt the city side? What is needed on the city side that will absolutely be subjected to cuts if we have to take? And, and, and we had to adhere to this, what, what don't we get on the city side that we desperately need?
We don't get oppositions, we don't get, you know, capital commitment or overall expenses in our departments are being frozen.
All departments.
We spent the last two weeks talking with every department, and that's what we're here, they need bodies, they need help too. We're trying to meet some of their needs because we know it's been a tough 15 years of level of funding, and the chickens come home to roost eventually, so we're trying to work with them. We have to say no, because there is only so much that we can put on the table.
And to Mayor Concanon and to Charlie, all right, now, does this affect our fire department, our police departments, their apparatuses, their operations?
Ultimately, yes, of course.
DPW and their operations.
There's only a lot of money out there. And the more of the pie that goes to one department, the less the pie available to the others. We're trying to make sure that we have sufficient staffing, sufficient budgeting to these other departments, but there's clearly some things that they could use that we just can't give them this year, it's gonna have to wait.
So they're just gonna have to get by. I appreciate it.
You know, I wanna give due respect to the meetings, the due diligence has been put in, I look at each of these, prioritize as much as we can, but we're looking at the reality that on the city side, we're probably going up 1.8% this year. So I mean, that's.
Which is what? How much is that?
I mean, it's probably closer to like 1.7%. Nothing's been found, but it's still working.
Oh, no, 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 no.
But that's compared to 10 times that.
Council, President Dylan?
Just to, not to beat a dead husb, but just to try to clarify on the redistricting and the money saved. And all due respect to Andrew, I disagree that we, in all those talks, it wasn't a big part of the redistricting saver money. No, you might, in the theory, believe that you have a opinion, you know, it doesn't matter. But I think in those talks, certainly that was a big reason that I at least, in my mind, encouraged the forward motion that we had the study done on the redistrict, just to clarify that.
I appreciate that, and, and, you know, I mean, those, those meetings were specifically about the budget, so it's not, to me, a surprise that the discussion surrounding redistricting focused on exactly that, on the, on the financial side of it. But, I mean, certainly, we have been talking about the space issues and ultimately redistricting before the budgetary components became a focus in those meetings. It is an important component, you're not wrong, and it's certainly one that, that, in those meetings, we focused on a great deal. Outside of those meetings, it was one of a number of factors that we looked at when we talked about redistricting.
Thank you.
Just on redistricting, it could be really short for an answer. Apparently you guys sent out some document that laid out five different plans. A couple of those plans separated fifth grades, where half went east and half went west as far as middle school goes, Plan One?
No, so let me, let me clarify what the plans do. None of, I mean.
Bray Circle, Watson.
So, right now, right now in the Woburn Public Schools, we have three elementary schools where students will branch off into two different middle schools, the Malcolm White, the Goodyear, and the Hurley White, right? In the options that we looked at, most of them reduce that amount and they equalize. So I think what you might be talking about is, is there are, there are some options where current fifth graders or fifth graders would branch off into two different middle schools. That is true, but it is more equitable than it was. We have, so right now, for example, like, you know, my son's a fifth grader at the Malcolm White, right? Something like 25% of his class goes to Joyce, including him, and 75% goes to the Kennedy, that's most of his friends. You know, it's unfortunate, right? In the plans that we have before the committee right now, that number is 50/50. So it's not perfect, but it is something that's a little more equitable, and it's, and it's fewer of our schools.
In short answer, the, the process going forward, will the public have, not my public, will the parents impacted have an ability to speak to the school committee?
Absolutely, yeah. And just in case people who were watching tonight weren't watching our meeting the other night, is that last night?
Last night.
Last night. We will hold a meeting on Monday, Monday, the 20th, in which we will hear from the public and we will deliberate and talk with administration about the different options that we have. And then we will vote on Thursday, the 23rd, on a final option, that meeting will also include opportunities for the public. And as always, and I've received many, many emails just today, my email is available for anyone who has questions, comments, concerns, complaints. I will take compliments, I will take it all.
Thanks, Andrew, I appreciate you.
Councilor?
I get only a couple, okay? And I'll, and I'll leave it be for the night.
You again.
You probably have the budget hearing.
Yes, yes. A couple of quick questions. So the HR director was a post-July 1 ad, at $138,000, I'm just curious, who, who did that? That was a cut position, who did that position prior to the ad? Like, who, who took on that responsibility? It wasn't filled before and then it was added, so there was a period in time where there was no one?
So, quickly answered.
About 30 years.
Okay, so who did it? Yeah, that's my question, sorry.
We, we did, we did have an HR person. And then we cut the position, and then it was vacant for a little while. We realized that we couldn't operate without an HR director, so we added it back in.
Okay, so that, and I'm not saying it's not needed, but who did, like, who took on that function when you didn't have the HR director?
Honestly?
Yeah.
Courtney, Maureen, myself.
Okay, mix of everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
And, and, I, I'm just, I wanna spend a moment just to, to stick up for our administration here.
Yeah.
The number of different jobs that our assistant superintendents do currently would blow your mind. It regularly blows my mind. We've added redistricting to that over the past few weeks. I know for a fact that, that these folks have been pulling, I mean, is it fair to say all-nighters? Pretty fair to say all-nighter on that topic. And, and that's in addition to the number of different things that they do. So, you know, our assistant superintendents, our administrative staff, they work hard and they do it for things that if we don't do those things, stuff for our, our staff and our kids break. That's, you know, it, it may not be seen and it may not be the definition of student-facing, but it absolutely affects the students' heart.
Thank you. Just a quick clarification, there's a couple of positions, I think, associated with assistant superintendent of positions. I asked Andrew this today, they're listed as, instead of 1, 1.0 FTE, they're listed as 0.85 FTE. Why is that and who pays the other 0.15 of their position?
Yeah, it's out of a grant.
Okay, is that shown somewhere in them, I'm just curious, on the budgets or no, or like in this, you know, in this budget? So like, when it's listed at 0.85 in this, I'm just using a random example, 130,000, their actual salary is 15% higher than that and it's paid for from another position?
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm looking over your shoulder, so, Ms. Young is.
So in fact, it's both of us actually, it's 0.85. So the reason is, and we talked about Title I, and then we've talked about, and we haven't talked about IDA, which is the special education grant of Maureen. So you have to have a grants administrator listed as part of the submission of that grant. You have to pay a portion of their salary that they do to manage that grant, which I do for all entitlement and Maureen does for all IDA grants. So we actually have to pay a portion, or if there was a different person who managed them, you pay a portion of their salary from it. And so that's why you take, we take what our salary is and you pay a portion of, and all the grants that I oversee is a portion of myself and a portion of Maureen is out of the grants that she oversees.
Awesome, thank you, yeah, I just saw that when I was looking through, it was one of only a couple of positions that, so it was just a question, thank you for the clarification. The, and this is just, I don't know, I don't know what curriculum coordinator is actually doing. So my only question without getting my head dropped off is, there's seven of them, are they, are they all needed? And that's just a very basic and it could be a yes and with an explanation, short one, if you want.
I would tell you, yes, we put them in back in when, when Mr. Demers was here.
His fault?
Yeah. No, honestly.
You're gonna take it?
Yeah. It, it, it actually goes back to where I started, this feels like last night, a couple hours ago. I, I found the Woburn Public Schools fragmented when I started here, and having someone that is responsible for either K-12 or 612 oversight of curriculum, but also evaluations, matters. And so I understand the question, you know, I think that the the Tanner Fest would be a great example of a K-12 curriculum coordinator pulling everybody across the city together to celebrate the fine and performing arts, so.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, if I may just, just add something on that. So basically what was occurring in Woburn Public Schools was that a high school teacher was a department head, but it was only a stipended position, they might have had a letter, course workload, and then they were required, well, basically the position was to. well, basically, the position was to work six through twelve, working on curriculum. We found that that was very difficult to coordinate and there wasn't the expected results we wanted to see. So these curriculum coordinators are basically full-time department heads that work on working that curriculum up from six through twelve or certain subjects or K through twelve and making, making sure that everything's aligned. And they're working with teachers. Uh, department heads, there was a little bit of lairiness of a department head who was a member of the union, not being able, or doing evaluations of somebody who was in the union as well. These coordinators are non, non-union members so that they can add, act as a subject content specialist to be able to go in and do the evaluation. So, you know, a principal who might have expertise as a history teacher going in to observe a lesson by a science teacher may not have had a full grasp on the content or, or pedagogy that, that was going on. So the, the curriculum coordinator are basically like experts in, in that curriculum that they can help other teachers that teach that.
Thank you. My last question, promise. Our, 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 our transportation cost is almost doubled. Um, you know, in, in line with our out-of-district costs is, I think, from twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four was substantially higher. Do we have alternative options, like to explore other companies that we can bid out? Like, and if we've done that, are they substantially lower? Are they all in line? Is it a separate by the state? Do we have options?
Look, Mr. DeMers is gonna want to take this one again.
It's difficult when there's only one company that pays.
It's funny how that happens, but yes. We, we, we ever seem to get one bit from our transportation.
So that's what we got. Transportation company.
Yes, we all say that.
Maybe it's a little cheaper.
Yeah, maybe there's talk.
I will say, there are a lot of districts, uh, that, I mean, there are larger districts than ours, but they have started to invest in their own, in their own bus fleets and allows them to electrify, it's all sorts of stuff.
Bluewood Bus.
There we go. I bet Mike Moren and will drive a bus, I'll tell you that. But requires, once again, money upfront in order to.
Thank you. I appreciate, honestly, I do appreciate answering all my questions. I do appreciate all of your department, you, Andrew, the school, school committee's hard work. And I know this is a tough, tough task to accomplish and, and, and kind of take on. Uh, and I, I think we'll work together to come to the best budget for the city, but thank you again. I appreciate it.
Anybody else?
President Dillon. You said it perfectly. This is not an easy deal, but we'll get it done and we'll get through this. And it will be the best for the students.
While everybody else spoke, had their questions, now it's my turn. All right, um. Let's see, uh, Dr. Crowley, what amount of money is the city carrying? Or maybe Charlie, you would know. Uh, what amount of money is the city carrying, uh, for the schools and including, uh, insurance that's not included in this budget?
Certainly, obviously, there's the insurance itself. Roughly, next year, projected to be eleven point seven million dollars net costs. It's actually higher overall, but there's an offset from the even more payments. Uh, we've also got all the debt that goes with, uh, all the buildings and all the renovations that we've done. Schools, just probably settling in the range of, of four point seven to five million dollars a year. Uh, portfolio costs, retired teachers, which gets taken out, hard estimate costs every year. And that's another, you know, two point two million dollars easily with. I mean, there could be a lot of.
The one point eight for the.
The one point eight that we spent aside, but that's not a convention, the one eight is forever. You know, I know, and I did want to say, oh, and Maureen, as far as the eighty million dollars on the school side, Maureen's side is for the penny, I know that. Whenever we want an update, we get it. So I think the due diligence that they do on that side is, is very well, uh, you know, backed from our side of the, of the budget also, because it is a challenging component. And I know it takes a lot to stay on top of it. But, yeah, I mean, that's.
Just quick math that comes out to roughly twenty million dollars. So that's twenty million dollars that's out of this budget that the city already takes care of.
We take care of us.
Dr. Crowley, speaking of that HR director, couldn't the school, the school department utilize the city's HR director?
I wish. Um, we have, no, I don't mean to be, like, you know, we have about a thousand employees. And so, and the issues are, you know, can get complicated. And the school law is, we need to follow. And so I know Shawna a little bit. She does a really nice job for the city. We're fortunate to have a new HR person who was, um, informally recommended through the city here. And so, um, you know, knowing Mass General Law, following our contracts, taking care of employees, so they have, um, health insurance questions, Family Medical Leave Act questions. I mean, there's a, a pretty challenging role hiring.
Next question I have is, under the multilingual department budget salaries, you have it listed, uh, the director up top at a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven sixty-three. And then down below, you have it listed as a coordinator at a starting, at FY twenty-four, one oh nine, two hundred. Then it jumps to the one forty-two, seven sixty-three. That's a thirty point seven three percent increase in that one department.
Yeah, so, um, we had a coordinator, um, at the end of last year, who worked two hundred days. Uh, she left to go to another district. We, not knowing that we were gonna have an influx, um, changed the position from a coordinator to a director who works two hundred and sixty days a year. And so hence the salary increase. And I will tell you, um, that because we put it as a director at a, at a reasonable salary, um, the person we have, uh, came from the city of Lynn. The Secretary of Education, Pat Tutweiler, um, who was a former superintendent in Lynn. Um, I saw him at a conference at the Cape during this interview process and he's, he pulled me over and said, hire her. And her name's Rania Caldwell. She's amazing. We're lucky to have her.
In that position, I mean, you know, I think sometimes we talk about some of the, the savings that we might not see. Part of what Rania's been able to do has been to, I do a, 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 I mean, identify students uh, that we maybe weren't able to identify before, uh, that we are then able to report to the state, which increases Chapter Seventy reimbursements and things like that, uh, in terms of when we look at our high needs population.
Looking at the HR department, um, the office supplies, budgeted FY twenty-three, seventy-two, seventy-two. FY twenty-four is two thousand. This year, it's twenty-four thousand, one sixty-four. That's a one thousand, one hundred and eight percent increase. Can you explain why such a drastic?
Yeah, so that, um, the new, uh, software. So onboarding software is the quick answer. We, um, to the point of trying to modernize our onboarding process, um, we, uh, there's two pieces. One is onboarding when we're hiring people. Currently, you know, we still have paper applications. And then you, when you onboard, then you come and I call it your hiring folder and it's paperwork and you have, you sit down and you go through it. We're spending about, I think, fifteen thousand to, to, um, make it digital. So people can onboard digitally, which is common practice, best practice now. And then the other, um, we have to do mandatory trainings every year with staff at the beginning of every school year. Um, and so there's a software that can do that and then tracks people, um, to make sure that they do it.
So maybe it would have been better to list it as technology instead of office supplies? Just.
Yep. Is that the type of line item that goes down next year because it was a one-time capital purchase? Or is that an ongoing?
That's recurring. Yeah.
Under Administration Central Office, it shows that the proposed, uh, funding is a hundred thousand this year where it was fifty thousand last year.
I don't understand. Which item?
The one that's highlighted.
Oh, legal.
Yeah, legal.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't say legal.
Sorry.
Um, yeah, so that, yeah, we're, the increase is to reflect the reality versus what we want it to be.
So are we expecting more, like, lawsuits or?
Hope not.
So out of the fifty thousand that was budgeted for this year, where are we at, do you know?
Um, I think we're over.
Over.
And in part because we didn't have an HR department for part of the year.
Good, getting back to the curriculum coordinators. I know they do a great job, but could we get by with less than seven? Because they're not student-facing and they make up about a million dollars of the budget.
I think we, Joey answered that question. Um, and I would argue that we need them.
And then how about the guidance curriculum coordinator that's a department head now? That, um, now is getting a new position, correct?
Uh, that's the intent.
And the technology department, the director, her, um, FY twenty-four salary was one twenty-three, five. Uh, FY twenty-five, it's now one seventy-seven, ninety-one. That's a thirty-eight percent increase.
Yeah, so I, I heard that last night. Um, it's two different people. So last year, FY twenty-four, um, it, it was, uh, because Jen Judkins is the director. She had moved to be the assistant for finance.
Correct.
So she was backfill that, that one twenty-four number, but she's moving back into.
So there's still just gonna be one position, but, but she's getting the higher rate for this year, correct?
That's her previous salary.
Oh, yeah, the, the previous, yeah, the previous salary which she had.
So again, two different people.
Right.
So the other way to think about it is, um, facilities, um, we have someone retiring. We're bringing someone in at a different salary, so there's a delta there, too.
Speaking of facilities, the staff overtime, it's at, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. Was saying that that's gonna be, uh, what we're allocating this year. Do you know where we're at this year? It's overtime?
Not off the top of my head.
Would you be able to get that for me?
I'll get anything for you.
All right, and if you could break it down as to like what majority of the needs of it were for?
I don't know if it's broken down that way.
There's, I, it shows that that's a twenty percent increase over last year.
If I may, I know that there was a lot of overtime and we had the leaks on the roof at the schools and also still.
Thanks, Maureen.
Yeah, can I? Can I just provide a little bit of clarification on a, a couple of different things? So just sort of for overall context, and Dr. Crowley talked about this at the beginning. Twenty-five percent of our population is now students with disabilities. And then we have another percentage of students on five-year programs, which are also students identified as children with a disability. We also have, is it sixteen percent of our students are multilingual? So it, it really is important to understand that the landscape has, has changed. I think it's also important to understand when we talk about things like HR, we have roughly eight hundred and fifty par professionals and they're coming and going and coming and going. And I don't know their names anymore because they come and go so frequently. The exiting, the onboarding, issuing the device, the back, all of these different pieces are very, very significant. We live in, I would say, a litigious world. I work with students, special education families. We work with employees that don't always get along. The, a lot of questions have been asked about HR and I would present to you that I think that position is saving the city a lot of money with liability issues. Courtney and I did a lot of that work for months and I'll tell you, you wouldn't believe the stuff that hits your plate. Um, you asked about things like the entitlement grants and are we capturing everything? This is where your non-student-facing positions are coming in. We are actually quite lean for our non-student-facing positions. And we are doing everything we can to run what is a very large organization. Um, we talk about the curriculum coordinator, some mandates from DESI with the paperwork, the education evaluations, the time. They do so much of that. If they weren't there, the role of your assistant principals would be drastically changed, which would then shift the landscape in the buildings. Um, when you ask about the programs, I would tell you, our programs are incredibly strong. In fact, it is a little bit problematic because I think some people come to Woburn for our programs. Um, I would say, you asked, have we returned students to district? Probably, I would say, close to ten students over the past few years, which is remarkable. We typically see them come back at the high school age level because we can entice them with sports. Woburn keeps more students in district than neighboring communities. And that's because our programs are strong. When you see the staff adds this year, most of those positions are for special education programs. If we don't add those staff and we don't maintain those, your students are, they're out, they're gone. Um, which is what then, not only do you have your tuitions, but you have your transportation. Why have your tuitions gone up so much? One, because the, the Woburn has had many, many students move in and the percentage of disabilities is higher and the students have more severe disabilities. Um, we also had a fourteen percent hike on the OSD rates last year, too, because our out-of-district schools are struggling with the same thing, staffing shortages. So they're raising their salaries to keep people and those rates are getting passed along to us. There's an awful lot of complexities with it, but when you think about the positions that you see in there, it, it really is saving us a lot of money because students are not going out. Transportation is just so tough, one bit. We, we got the contract today, um, it is through scene, the rates are sky-high. And, you know, we, we were sort of joking, we'd love to have someone else to do it, but there isn't anybody. And by law, we've got to transport the kids. Um, and it's, it's really tough. The only good news with the transportation is that the circuit breaker is starting to come in, reimbursing more and more of that transportation, so it is, it's helping on the flip side. But I think that's overall, this is, I know this is a predicament and this is sort of a tough space for all of us to be in. Our teachers, they're working, I can't even believe the work that they do. I walk through these classrooms and I see the little three-year-olds in diapers and they're everywhere. And you walk in and you say, holy cow, how do they manage this? And you see the kids that can't walk and that have mobility issues and can't, can't see. And you have our non-verbal autistic kids. I mean, I truly would welcome anyone to come walk the buildings. I really think it would, it, it's, you would be very, very surprised and it lends just a whole new perspective to it. But we're here having a really difficult budget discussion. And the reality is, we have a really complex school system. And I just, I think it's important to, to keep that perspective.
Thank you.
Just for the public, explain that, uh, break-up deal so they know what exactly it means.
So the circuit breaker sets a foundation amount, which is now just, just over fifty thousand dollars. And so if we send a student out of district and tuitions range anywhere, very few of them are under fifty thousand dollars anymore and some of them go up to four hundred thousand. We are seeing higher and higher tuitions. And we're seeing out-of-district schools that are bottomless selective because they don't need seats filled the way they used to, so they can pick and choose. The way the circuit breaker works is if you were to have a school that is, say, a hundred thousand on the nose, the foundation amount is fifty thousand. So Woburn would pay the tuition all year long and in July, we will submit a circuit breaker. The foundation amount of fifty thousand, we pay. The remaining difference, which if it's a hundred thousand dollar tuition, would be fifty thousand, the state will pay a percentage of that depending on how much money there is. We usually hope for seventy-ish percent and then they would reimburse that quarterly the following fiscal year. Woburn did qualify for extraordinary relief, um, this year and I believe last year, which was an extra payment, which was about close to half a million dollars. It was very, very helpful, um, by doing an extra circuit breaker filing in March. And so we do see some money reimbursed, but we do have to budget for the tuitions because we don't know, um, how much will actually come in. And I think working with, um, the city side and, and the one point eight, we've been very, very fortunate. We will probably have, um, because of the extra payment that came in, I believe, Charlie, I think we're gonna have one point seven left. We're very close. I, I believe we will have that intact. Um, but, you know, circuit breaker is a. But, you know, circuit breaker is a reimbursement, so you still have to, you have to plan.
Thank you for explaining that, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else, any comments? Well, I want to thank everybody from the administration, school committee, Dr. Crowley, city side, city audit, Mr. Mayor for coming tonight. I guess this was very helpful and very informative.
Well, I, I'd say thank you, I hope it was helpful. The offer stands, please let me know if you want to go visit schools. It can be Tuesday morning or it can be another time. One of the, it's a question really, or a statement, because I'm, I just, I'm seeking some clarification. I presented this last night to the school committee, the school committee sent it down to city hall. We have contractual obligations that we need to meet. We have to plan, we have to operationalize schools for the fall. So what I'm saying is, we need to build schedules for kids at the secondary level. Are, are we eliminating things? We don't know, like, so I, there's different realities that we, we have to operate within. And so I, I can appreciate the dialogue, if you will, but at some point. I need, or through the, through the school committee direction about.
I can give you that, Derek.
Okay.
So we are finishing up the city side budget process right now. We will be submitting a budget to the city council early next week in advance of a special meeting. We'll present the budget. I will take a school committee budget number paired with the city side budget number and that will be the number. So we will know that early next week.
Okay.
And then the hearing will be scheduled after that when Gordon and I sit down and figure out when the actual budget hearing will be.
Can I just interject something, just because of the union need? We have to let teachers know if they were going to be let go by Thursday, so.
Is there not a provision on special circumstances?
I don't believe, I don't believe.
Oh, there is.
It's May fifteenth, maybe tomorrow, there is that provision, I can't quote it off time.
I would say it's, um, uh, special cer- unforeseen.
Yeah, unforeseen circumstances. It's not something that we, we want to wade into if we had a choice.
Well, redistricting is going to yield some sort of change and you'll have to notify whoever's affected by that. And that's not gonna happen by the fifteenth.
So that, there's a different clause?
I would suggest that is the location where you might find that impact.
Understood, that is part of the reasoning why we are looking towards early retirement. I think Dr. Crowley was gonna mention as well regarding the district thing, the clause.
Yeah, relative, and I'm gonna look at Eric because he might know it better than me. I believe with the redistricting, there's a clause, there's two different parts of the contract. One is reduction in force with unforeseen circumstances.
Yes.
And then there's a reduction in force or involuntary transfer based on student enrollment.
Yes, yeah.
And so I think the redistricting would be more student enrollment based, that, that would be my thoughts, but.
And our hope, of course, is that we don't have to do any of this, right? Our hope is that we can keep our educators where they need to be, which is in our classrooms and working with our kids. And, and Mr. Mayor, to your point regarding redistricting, you know, we deeply appreciate the city's willingness to look at an early retirement incentive. Which we discussed both as a, as a, as a fiscal measure. And also as something that might allow us to retain our staff in the, in the result, you know, in, in, in the event of a, of a reduction through redistricting.
Yeah, that's a very good point, especially in this room, with this audience. We made pledges contingent upon the blessing of this group right here. As the redistricting discussion unfolded and we had a certain sense, perhaps things were, but a sense. That there were dozens potentially of teachers who could be impacted by redistricting. Which carried with it somewhere in the range of a couple of million dollars potentially. We all had the thought that we didn't want to lose dozens of Woburn teachers. Even though it was efficient and it would be based on a redistricting that put bodies in the seats where they belong and all those things we talked about earlier. We still didn't want to lose dozens of terrific Woburn teachers. So we brainstormed the possibility of offering an early retirement incentive to teachers who will probably consider retiring anyway. They would happily leave with a blessing and a bonus. And those dozens of teachers who we might otherwise lose to redistricting, we can now save in the system. Understanding it's not a one-for-one based on certifications and levels, but at least rough numbers. We would save their jobs. And that was going to be the city, our side, ponying up that potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars. To pay those senior teachers to leave. That was the city paying, not the school department. And again, that was me writing a check in my mouth that you guys would have to cash when, when and if this comes about and we come down and ask you to do it. You could just as easily say, no, we're not going to spend city pre-cash stabilization fund dollars on this school department issue. We're already spending enough on, but we took a leap of faith as a group and said, we think they'll probably see the benefit in this. Because it does lead to cities. It saves jobs and it also leads to savings when you see the senior person at X dollars retiring. Replaced by the junior person at X minus dollars, there's a savings there. We felt fairly confident that you would see the reasoning of that. However, we also said, if redistricting has an outcome only yields three or four teachers being displaced. We would have to revisit whether we thought it made sense to continue with the early retirement. Not that we wouldn't, but they were married together. We only talked about, I brought up the early retirement because of the impact of redistricting. Because we were told we're looking at dozens of people probably losing their job. So the two issues are tied together. I would say that I still see benefit in an early retirement. I still think it's a good use of the city's funds because there is that savings. It creates another part, buying these new young people to replace these senior people who are leaving. I would still say it's a good approach. But I go back to what I said early on, I said it the other night and I said it a few minutes ago now. I do believe the redistricting discussion has to involve all of the parts, including the financial. And if there's a financial savings to be had by doing it a certain way, it has to be one of the factors. I am expecting the school committee to look at redistricting in the full, the full view. Money to be saved, I think you should consider. That's why I think the placeholder for redistricting has to be in the budget. And it should be realistic, reasonable, perhaps a little bit optimistic, as should the early retirement. And if at the end of the day, we do everything we possibly can, we make the best possible decisions. And it turns out we didn't save as much as we thought, I will stand with you in front of the council and say, we are off, we're gonna need some more money. And it'll be up to this group to decide whether they support it. My sense is they likely would because it's all in good faith, it's all in the best interest of reducing the budget and providing the service. That's what this was all about, which is why I need to see those placeholders be realistic. I can't come down to this council with a budget that has a very good chance of leaving money on the school side that isn't needed. You, you heard from them, I heard loud and clear from this council. I don't know that there's a mechanism for the school committee to revisit the budget that is already passed. But it's something I'm looking at on the city side as we compile the entire city budget, including the school budget that we set down next.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We put flags out in the woods and they have a little electronic control box. Everyone gets their map and, oh, there's all these things circled, all right. And they all have a finger stick, which is the electronic control device. And they read the map and it, it is, it is a competition. But it's also, we have groups, we have families, we have city counselors going out with their friends. Most people, once they find the first, oh, look at this one, yeah, that's the right one, it's like, ah, it kind of, that's what the map told them. So it's an easy way of teaching people land navigation and orienteers do it as a competition. It's just like any sport, you've got your elite people and then you've got the everybody is welcome level. So as they go around and they dip their finger stick, stick in each control box and they come back and hit the finish. We know that they're out of the woods. And that's not so big a problem at Horn Pond, you can't go too far without hitting a road.
So the reason why you're asking for the liability waiver is there really isn't too much going on that would require an umbrella insurance policy, correct?
There's, oh, I'm a little hard of feeling.
It's all right, so you, you've applied for the umbrella insurance waiver here this evening, so. It's, seems like it's a very low-impact sport or event, so I think, I think we'll be ready to move forward this evening on granting the waiver.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the waiver of the umbrella liability insurance for New England Orienting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just had to say, it was a blast.
I did it with my daughter, we had a ball.
You are all invited. If you've never walked through Horn Pond, I know a lot, hopefully a lot of you have.
Yeah.
So in August.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for waiting, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Take care.
Next on the agenda is a petition for the renewal of taxi cab licenses for Woburn Cab Company at one hundred Ashburton Avenue. All proper motor vehicle registrations are in place, insurance policy is in place, tax liens are here. There being no proper inspections are done, there being no citizen complaints in this package, so I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the renewal of the taxi cab license for Woburn Cab Company be issued outside.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Last on the agenda is a renewal of livery license for Harmony Transportation Incorporated at Eight Con Street. Similar report, all paperwork's in order, no citizen complaints, I'll entertain a motion.
Same action?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Much quicker than finance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Have you lost one yet?
No, you have not. Couple have been misplaced, but never lost.
Yeah, you get, they all come back.
All set, gentlemen, ready?
All right, I'll call the order, the ordinance charter and rules committee. On the committee, our chairman, DeMares, myself, Councilor Toro, Councilor Mercer Brunn is absent this evening. Councilor Perulo and Councilor DeMambro. On our agenda this evening, could I entertain, I'll entertain a motion that we waive the reading in previous meetings minutes.
Also move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The one item we have on our agenda, this is more of an update agenda item as opposed to a presentation. So I am actively looking at what other communities have been doing with regards to their zoning ordinance review committee. And I'm hoping to get some more additional language and more clarity on some options that we may have. And hopefully present that at our next committee meeting. And then see what we can draft that is agreeable to all those involved. So that the control of the city council with regards to zoning ordinances is protected. We hear from the planning board and then hopefully this bears some fruit in the form of a report. That's sent out maybe every three years just to review our zoning ordinances to make sure that we're keeping up with the times. So other than that, I don't have anything more substantive considering the length of the meetings earlier. I wouldn't see any need to continue discussion unless anybody had any particular input on the drafted ordinance. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I'll be real proof.
Yep.
Instead of taking the project on once every three years, is it possible to make it cyclical where you do it third, third, thirds? That it was an ongoing revolving process or is it better to take it on?
So we can look at that, I mean, what I've seen from other cities and towns is they basically have it written into their bylaws that you would review it on, say, you know. Some other towns do it where it's, on, on odd years, the zoning ordinance review committee will meet by the first Thursday in April. And then a report's issued by the fall.
Just true.
Uh, yeah, so there's multiple ways of skinning the cat here, I'm willing to promote any type of.
That almost makes sense.
Constellation language that.
Politically, like, in my current world, in my old world at the police station, every policy procedure needs to be viewed. So no policy procedure hasn't been seen in longer than three years and it just makes the workload flow better. And I'm not trying to go somewhere at nine o'clock at night where we don't need to go.
No, yeah.
Just wanted to raise the issue.
Yeah, I know, and it make, it makes sense in that sense. And I mean, there's also, you know, I point on, I've come up with some other ideas that I want to kind of throw by the mayor and meet up with him one-on-one. With our tight budget as it is, I don't know if, don't know if a consultant hire will be in the offing in this budget cycle. But other communities do reach out to consultants to kind of review and rewrite. Our ordinances were written in nineteen eighty-five and have been patchworked since. Again, I'll say, we have an ordinance that legally would be fought against because it mentions all the utility companies that are no. We don't even have them doing business to us now. They're, they're so far off what the original company was that if somebody were to challenge the ordinance, it would probably hold up in court.
I appreciate you bringing this to the floor.
These are the things that, you know, I wanna, I wanna cover us so we're not having arguments at special permit hearing about a particular ordinance when it's not the subject of the special permit.
Chairman DeMares, I'd just say, you know, I like the idea of every two years and the reason why is because city council.
Correct.
Is enforced for two years.
Yep.
You see it for two years, so on those odd years, you would definitely have to address the ordinance.
Right.
Or whoever sits in the seat on the city council.
Just to focus on modernizing our ordinance is make sure our legal liability is covered so that there could be no challenge to the ordinances based on rulings that we have. And looking out for our residents, so.
I agree with that.
With that, all in mind and moving forward to do more research, I'll entertain a motion for the committee to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.